Make sure you know how to get it from the cloud to give it to Colleen later. I don't know what whatever that means.
So she can get it.
Okay. Oh, it is. That's right.
Okay, um, as the Chair of this meeting, I need to confirm that all members and persons anticipated on the agenda are present and can hear me. School committee members, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Elizabeth Alota.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Mauro Hogan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes.
Um, staff, when I call your name, please respond on the affirmative. Um, well, Colleen's not here. Um, Charles Cabron.
Here, yes.
And Brian Hess. Oh, now Ryan's needed.
Uh oh. Yes.
Um, and Chuck Karagennis.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Um, this open meeting of the Maynard School Committee is being conducted remotely as allowed by the Act Governor Baker signed into law on July 16th, 2022, extending certain pandemic-related policy measures. This bill authorized the continuation of remote meetings in public access under the Open Meeting Law and other remote meeting provisions until March 31st, 2023. This committee committee is convening by Zoom as posted on the district's website. Please note that this meeting is being recorded accordingly. Be aware that other folks may be able to see you and take care not to share screen share your computer. Anything that you broadcast may be captured by the recording, which is audible to and viewable by the public. Additionally, please use your the raise your hand function to let the Chair know if you are planning to record or broadcast this meeting. Um, most of the supporting materials that have been provided for the members of this body are available on the Maynard Public School website in a folder titled 2022-2023 Agendas, under the tab Agendas, under the tab School Committee. The public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda and documents unless the Chair notes otherwise. Any citizen wishing to make public comments to be okay, um, I want to come back to that. Um, the meeting ground rules before we go to the first item on the agenda, permit me to cover some ground rules for effective and clear conduct of our business and ensure accurate meeting minutes. I will introduce each speaker on the agenda after they conclude their remarks. I will ask each member if they have any comments, questions, or motions that they would like to make. I will go through the members for additional comments or questions if time allows. Please hold off on speaking until your name is called and remember to speak clearly and in a way that helps generate accurate meeting minutes. If members wish to engage with other members, please do so through the Chair and take care not to interrupt anyone who is speaking. Finally, each vote taken in this meeting will be conducted by a roll call vote. Um, before we move to the first item on the agenda, roll call to come to order. Um, Mauro.
Yes.
Mary.
Yes.
Natasha.
Yes.
And Elizabeth.
Yes.
Um, so I didn't read the section about the citizens' comments because um, there's sort of a discrepancy between what was written on the agenda about emailing the um, comments for school committee meeting and the policy that we approved at the last meeting where folks can sign up ahead of time and then speak in the meeting. Um, so I was hoping we could sort of do um, a combination today. If anyone had emails or has emailed, we can read them. Um, and then maybe just give an opportunity for anyone to raise their hand if they'd like to make a comment. And Loua signing up since that procedure wasn't shared yet, um, so they can make a comment um, in person when we get to that item on the agenda. Does that make sense?
For me, it does. I just want to make sure what is the functionality enabled where people can raise their hand right now? That would be my only question.
Yes, that a function is available.
It is. It is already awesome.
Um, okay, so actually, that's the next item on the agenda, so. We don't have any citizens' comments emailed in. Would any of the um, folks that are logged on to the meeting right now like to make a public comment um, verbally now? Um, if you do, please raise your hand. Um, okay. I guess we'll go on to urgent business. Um. Brian, do you want to um, cover that?
Do I have one item actually on urgent business? So it's pretty exciting. Um, so tune in. So urgent business would be that the Keenan Fence Project, which was approved by the CPC for roughly $110,000. Being the exact amount there.
That was 110.
Hundred and ten thousand dollars. Uh, there's a contract that was signed by the Select Board for $99,120. So still well within the amount, but after the walkthrough, once they got a hired a company, did a walkthrough, signed the contract, they and we had people, Mike Ariah, Jay Rashie, Tony, a handful of people part of the walkthrough. There were some amendments to be made to the contract. They wanted to, and you have it in your folder. So there are a couple of items. They wanted to not do um, a part of the install, the fence install, um, removing the canopy, which was a deduction of 4,000, but then they wanted to add two alternates, which totaled totaled $5,930 for a total add of $3,420 to the contract CPC. We checked with them. This is well within the range because we're well under the $110,000. Um, I asked, I bring it to you so you could give it approval so that it could then go to the next uh, Select Board meeting, in which case they actually are the ones to sign the contract. I had this conversation with Greg this morning. Um, so he's well aware of it and was comfortable with them beginning, once you give it approval, comfortable with them act the company starting work because these are sort of the end of the project changes. It's more like a change order than an amendment, if you will, in uh, construction terms. So it's well within the 110 CPC is has no issue with this. Just letting you know and hopefully you'll, I'm sort of deferring to um, Mike Ariah, Jay Rashie, and the people that are on site, Bob Savoy, recognizing that this is a better option. It actually will match. Um, so Keenan Field will match the look and components of DJ's field. That's what the change orders for.
Was that your question, Mary?
Yes, yeah, and it wasn't going to be a question. It was, I was happened to be at that meeting last night, so I was just going to say that it was to keep it consistent. And also, um, the um, there was a safety cover that was that additional 5930 just to make it safer, to make the top of the fence safer. So it's actually creating a safer environment.
Um, what's the status of the timeline for this now at this point?
Uh, they are, they will, my guess is had it not been pouring rain for the last couple of days, they may have start, they would have planned to have started this week. They want to get it done before there's a hard freeze to the ground. And even though it's raining and snowing, it's still quite mild, so I would anticipate them starting as soon as possible. And it, I don't believe it's more than a few weeks worth of work.
Oh, great.
Weather dependent, that is.
It's always the end of February, if I remember correctly. But um, and Bob Savoy is chomping at the bit to get the work going. He said that a couple of times last night before there is a freeze.
And it'll be all done before, obviously, the spring season.
Yes.
Brian, when is the next Select Board meeting? Is that Tuesday?
I don't think it's until the, I want to say the 17th, but I.
They just had one this past Tuesday, so it'll be two weeks.
So we still have to wait.
Wouldn't hold it up. So even if you say, yep, this is fine, even though the Select Board hasn't voted it, the majority of the contract can start.
Okay.
Because we voted on, we voted on the last one, right? It's already that, did they, did the Select Board approve that?
Yep.
One, they did write that one. Okay, so there's this, like you said, it's a change order, right?
Yes.
Got it. So should we um, approve it as a change order?
I think that makes sense.
Okay, and what was the flat, the dollar amount again? Sorry, hold on.
3,420.
$3,420?
Addition, correct.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we approve the change order for totaling $3,420 for the Keenan Field Fence Project, um, as has been recommended and uh, approved by the CPC.
I can second.
Discussion? Okay, roll call vote, Mauro.
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
Did you vote Elizabeth? I couldn't hear.
I said yes.
Okay, um, and then Natasha?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Thank you.
Get that done.
Student representatives report.
So if I can, Liam emailed earlier and said he had a lesson and he would be a little bit late, but he was anticipating joining 7:20-ish or so and would be happy to present at that point or as soon as it fits in after that. If that's all right with you.
Um, should we go on to the superintendent's report?
Yeah, that would be, that makes sense. That's a, I kept mine short because I know who's got the big chunk of this meeting is the guy with glasses in the middle with dark hair. But anyway, let's talk about the superintendent's report. And we have some updates. So we have a community forum coming regarding the Youth Risk Behavior Survey. We'll have more information about that um, Friday before break, just to give you the final update on the lovely tree that came down at Green Meadow. Um, and thank uh, Bob Savoy, the Custodian, the DPW. There's a lot of people involved in that. It happened to be, if you remember that Friday, and I don't know if you can remember that far back, but it was raining like nobody's business. And I will tell you, I went out there and it was windy. The tree came down, blocked the safety road, clipped the building, the corner of the, the back corner of Green Meadow knocked a gutter off and dislocated a few tile uh, roofing tiles, roofing shingles, um, in which case the tree was removed and cut so that the road was open. Uh, the building was taken repaired to something, a little bit. It wasn't leaking. We were inside, outside. Bob and his crew made sure that the building was secure. Um, so we're all set with that for now. The Green Meadow Building Project, that is becoming more and more interesting. We actually have a, our first working group meeting tomorrow, early afternoon to get into some of the nitty gritty about this project, to get all the questions answered so that as we move forward and we're starting to do public, more public presentations, we have very specific answers to some of the really good questions that have been asked in the last month or so, just about sustainability, site design, things like that. Um, so there'll be more updates um, coming, probably, I would say, very soon, starting weekly, just as we're making progress.
Brian, can I add something? Because it came up in the Select Board meeting just um, as well, just to share that same thing. Um, the Select Board, um, Justine gave an update and she said that also future meetings will now be recorded um, and posted for, for folks to refer back to that material, future materials will be provided to the Select Board at the same time as the Building Committee. And I think that was intended to allow for more Select Board time to deliberate, um, so they can vote. I think there was like a very small window when they were, you know, the turnaround time that was being asked didn't feel comfortable for them, so they had um, implemented that they'll be, they'll be getting it at the same time as the, as the Green Meadow Building Committee. Um, one point that was clarified was that the schematic design was a jumping off point. And this was something um, to the effect that the contract is um, once you, once you approve it, you, there's still ability to change certain, certain things like systems, but not necessarily like location. And so there, there was some clarification, I think more confidence in, in understanding what that vote really means and the ability of what can change um, after versus, you know, holding true to some inflexibilities that maybe were perceived before. Um, there was, the, they said the ability to reduce the expenses once the schematic um, designs are approved is possible, so you could spend less, but you can't, you know, expense more because then the town would own that additional expense. So that was a good point to clarify. So there is the ability to like, hey, it might not be 74 million, maybe it's less. I don't know. Um, and that the, that there is contingencies that are built in into it a lot. I didn't hear the exact dollar amount, but um, there was also expressed that they would, you know, be less um, doubting or second guessing of the OPM, but more advocating for the cost and design as the intent of the Select Board representatives. So I just wanted to share that.
No, thank you. And one of the processes that we obviously were a little bit early in the process for any building, but one of the processes we'll go through in the pretty near future is value engineering. So if you were part of the high school or the Fowler School, you probably have done that. And that's what you're talking about. It's one of the ways that you're talking about Natasha is that um, you can change materials and things like that to something less expensive, to your point. You're, you wouldn't necessarily go more, but it is a way to uh, reduce costs to some extent. When you're talking about a building that's roughly 90,000 square feet, changing a tile or the height of tile over the course of the building has pretty significant impacts pretty quickly. So we'll be going through that process.
Thank you.
I have a question too. Oh, sorry.
Well, you go. It's okay.
Um, who's going to be responsible for sharing the materials of the Select Board? And can they also share it with the school committee so that the school committee has the same information that the Select Board has?
Yeah, I'm sure that's Phil. I'll talk to him tomorrow. When he sends that, he'll just send it or, but yes, I thought the same thing. If they're going to get it, you'll get it.
Yeah, okay, great. Thank you.
Can we also make it available to the Finance Committee? Not just like them, just a thought.
I think.
I think it's a very valid point, Mary, because ultimately they do, I know that there's been a sense that sometimes they feel a little bit removed from, from the conversation. So I think if they allows more time for everyone to kind of mull it over or, or even regroup in between, I guess a plus for the community as well.
I think it can just help everybody be on the same page too, and people aren't feeling like anybody doesn't know what's going on or somebody knows more than someone else and it can help everybody feel more comfortable.
Yeah, we, I'll, I'll talk to Phil and see if we can just get one um, sort of email package together that he can just send out after every meeting. Perfect. Just to keep it clean so everybody has the same information. They don't have to look for it and whatnot.
Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. So the last thing, this is exciting. And then, because I see Liam has joined us, so this is the last thing that I'll talk about before we go, and then we'll go back to Liam. Um, but we got a donation, a fabulous donation that was so helpful to our high school. You probably saw it in your packet, but I'm just going to read it out loud because it's, we don't get it that often. Um, the Maynard High School DECA Distributive Education Clubs of America received a donation of $10,000 from Nathan and Jennifer Fleeger, who are Maynard residents. Um, and if you recall at the end of last year, there was a lot of talk about DECA. Um, if you remember, Adam Fowler, uh, senior, now probably a freshman at college, but he was involved in really getting that off the ground last year for, as a club. Um, and the club works to, for emerging student leaders and entrepreneurs in marketing, finance, hospitality, and management that are in high school and colleges around the globe. And the club really, they compete at various events in areas of marketing, finance, hospitality, and management. Um, and the funds that were donated are, they've been deposited into the DECA Student Activity Account, and they will be used for clubs upcoming, upcoming competition fees, transportation, overnight accommodations as needed, and other club-related expenses. Last year alone, as a first year, it cost just under $5,000 in expenses to, for that particular club. Great club, and we are very thankful to this family. So actually, you need to accept that too. I, I read that. I'm excited about it, but I think you need to accept the donation officially.
So. I don't think we're generous and very exciting.
Yeah, and who's written them a letter of thanks?
Once you accept it, we will.
Okay, thank you. Huge letter. I think we should name a day after. No.
That's what we need.
This is, it's so, I mean, honestly, um, I mean, it, it is amazing. I mean, that the, first of all, it's amazing that we have this, this club that everyone is so excited about because I keep hearing about it, the energy, that enthusiasm, which is great. Um, but also that the, the support that the community has and the um, in, in, in our ability to continue with that is just amazing. So, so Jen, Nathan, thank you very much. Yeah. I'll make a motion that we accept the $10,000 donation from Nathan and Jennifer Fleeger um, for the Maynard High School DECA Distributive Education Club of America.
Second.
Discussion? Um, roll call, Mauro?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And I'm a yes too. Thank you, um, Fleegers. That's so generous and kind and helpful.
And Brian.
Yes.
Um, as part of whatever information, I wonder maybe at the end of the year, if it would be, if we can remember to send them some type of report of how their monies have benefited like through the year and how we've spent it and just how we're being, how we were stewards of those funds. Um, just to extend appreciation of how much we, um, you know, we've continued to use that, if that's possible.
Absolutely.
I feel like the kitchen dude, that should be a kid thing.
Well, yeah, that's the group. That's what I'm thinking is the group should, you know, really, I mean, sponsorships are something that help us in all regard. And I think anyone who puts money forward always wants to hear how it's, the return is happening through the year. So that would be great that we could do that for them.
I know. Sorry if I'm allowed to talk here. As someone at DECA, um, we always write like thank you letters and like explanations to everyone who donates. We have a GoFundMe, so anything is appreciated. But I know last year we got a lot of donations and we were writing letters for a while to like, just like try to, like personalize, you know?
Great. Yeah, I know. That's, that's amazing. I mean, I think that's what they want to see is really the direct impact that how their funds are directly impacting the students on an individual um, level. So I really, I'm really glad that you're, you're taking ownership of that. Thank you.
It's also a skill that you should be building in.
Yeah, it is a business skill.
So I'm done. I'll turn it over back to you, Madam Chair.
Um, so student representative report?
Hi, yeah, so um, it's a very busy night in the high school, which is where I am. Um, there's a student council meeting happening just in the other room, which is why I'm in the hallway. And there was also a musical practice going on, like just until a couple of minutes ago. So they were just lead on. It's very busy, very hectic, but it's a lot of fun. There's been some great highlights from last few weeks. It was a ring ceremony over break for basketball, which was a really big game, like tons of people who weren't even there in person streamed it. I think we got like 100 viewers in the stream at one point. And also, the room was very high energy, very, it was a great place to be. Um, there was a big gingerbread house event at the like, um, high school, which got like really widespread student participation, like way more than anyone expected, which was just a gingerbread house competition. And that was right before break, like on the Thursday. And it, they basically like filled the library with like the number of people that were like coming in to make your new breadhouses. It was like a great showcase of student community and student spirit. And we're really excited. That was done by the um, Leaders of Change slash Pure Leaders Club, I think. I don't know which, what they're called technically, but they're like the like leadership club around here. Um, Aspect Hockey won a championship trophy in the Bushnell Hockey Conference. And there, the Aspect Hockey team is, is like kind of shared with Maynard, so all our players go and play for Aspect. So that was really exciting. And I know there were a lot of the hockey kids were really excited and they were posting stuff on Instagram, so we're really happy for them. And we're proud that we get to have hockey players, even though like if we weren't collaborating with Aspect, we probably wouldn't go support a hockey program. So we're really glad that they were able to play and were able to make an impact. Um, we have a couple of concerns and suggestions to bring to your attention. One of them is a lot of students, particularly student athletes, think it would be good for us to get a part-time or full-time athletic trainer to help like protect student athletes' health and help like educate them and like how to stretch, how to treat injuries, or not like treat injuries, but like manage them in like an athletic way. Because a lot of times like coaches are just going based on like stuff they look up on the internet and it isn't always super, I won't, I won't say like super good for athletes because coaches try a lot, but they definitely need someone like the professional that has experience and knows how to do it like correctly and in a safe and healthy way. Because injuries for student athletes are, they're no joke. Like there are kids that will go out and come back and be like, they won't, they'll like be on crutches. They'll be like really hurt. And it's, it would be good for the school to get someone to help protect them. So that's why a lot of students think it'd be great for us to get an athletic trainer. Um, there's a lot of support for arts in the school as well. There's a mural that's going to be going up in the high school soon, near the um, senior and junior teachers like E.L.A. room. And it's good, it's a lot of excitement, we think, that are particularly in the schools and any one of the schools, murals and stuff is a great way for students to build community through creating it and also through like kind of making the school theirs. You know, like they see a mural that was made by fellow students and they feel like connected to the school environment, which is really important. I think particularly in the high school, which is, it's a newer school. It feels kind of like, I won't say soulless, but it feels very like not really like lived in yet, you know? So I think murals and stuff like that is really going to help us like bring community into the school. So, yeah. Um, and the final thing is that a lot of Maynard students want to report that they enjoy the exchange students and like exchange programs in general. They love when they come here and they also like going places. I know a lot of people, there's a Germany trip that's coming up soon. A lot of our students are going to be going to Germany for a few weeks. A lot of people are really excited for that because it's a great way to see other cultures, to just like see a different way of living. And I think that's like the best type of education, like, like meeting other people, learning about them, learning from them. Um, coming up, we have midterms in the high school, which is obviously a really high stress moment for a lot of students. Um, the school, the student, sorry, there's so many SCs, like School Committee, Student Council, that like they got all mixed up in my mind. The Student Council is going to be working to like help mitigate student stress during the midterms with cocoa and cramming, which is basically an after-school thing with teachers and hot chocolate to help like students study and help students like stay on top of midterm stress because it can really overwhelm people. Um, Martin Luther King Day is coming up, which is a great day, just in, in memory of like a great leader. And it's also a day off school, which a lot of students are really excited for. Um, and also, we have some new exchange students coming, which was part of what brought the exchange student comment. Normally, some exchange students only come for half a year, so we have a couple of students leaving and a couple of new students coming in, who, it's always really exciting, you know, new students, new faces. So we'll see how that goes. Thank you. That's the report.
Hi, thank you so much. That's really helpful. Um, I also um, wanted to check in if you have an update on the food and how that situation is going and how kids are feeling about that.
Um, I think it's been just rocky, honestly. It's like not the end of the world, but it's definitely the kind of thing where like, we're working on it. There's multiple subcommittees in SAC and Student Council working on it. And it's just like, it's going to take time, honestly. It's like, there's supply chain issues obviously affecting the distributor and there's also communication issues. We've been working to establish clear lines of communication and we hope to see it in the future.
Thank you. Natasha?
I just wanted to one, thank Liam and the group and Principal York and um, and Dr. Up for inviting or welcoming me the other day. I was able to attend the SEC meeting and it was really enjoyable to hear the dynamic conversations that were going on. Uh, the food part that you mentioned was part of that conversation. And I think from my takeaway was because there obviously is a desire for the school committee to hear more about that. I think there's still some work about engaging with the vendor and also um, understanding what has been implemented a little bit because there was different feedback I could hear just in the room about maybe some, there's two different lunches, maybe some lunch two offerings might not happening the same as lunch one. So I had suggested some data collection, you know, that they might do over a month's period of time, um, which is usually always a great way to kind of say, okay, this is what, if, if they're intending to do a change, but it's not being received that way, the data is the best way to kind of, um, you know, you get your point across on, well, we're running out of this on these days. Out of 30 days, we ran out of it, lunch two, 20 days, or whatever that might be. So I, I think that that was something that I had suggested and I hope that that, you know, with that coming more um, armed with information that it will, along with the emotional piece of just not feeling, you know, very, the sat, the offerings were very satisfactory. I think that will hopefully, you know, bring some more discussion that we will, I think eventually hear more about. But it sounded like Liam, right, that there is more, that there's a subcommittee that's been formed and the subcommittee is going to be doing some more work. Um, I know there's midterms coming up too, which makes things a little bit more um, complicate, complicated with bandwidth, but there is some more engagement with the vendor and who has been willing to do that, right?
Yeah, definitely. There's been a lot of work going into that.
Okay, and I, I know one of the things which is tough as well is um, well, you mentioned about supply chain, but also is what the desire for, for students and what they want to eat versus, you know, what the offerings are. And I know as kids, you know, students get into adults and go to college, the offerings become a lot more diverse. the offerings become a lot more diverse and, you know, and in meeting those those needs of of the population there. So it it almost seems like maybe there is some work around that a little bit more, understanding what what folks are, you know, believing they should have as a staple or not. Um, because that didn't seem like it was the same consistently through all the feedback that I heard at just at that one meeting uh that that, you know, but the one thing that two things I take away that were really important, Liam, and I'd like to make sure you you hear this is that um that there does definitely need to be an appreciation for for students who have eating um, you know, if they're gluten, you know, whatever the challenge might be. So if students are not feeling like that type of level of requirement, um dietary need is being satisfied, there that's an urgent thing that would need to be addressed. Um, and we would want to hear certainly what that might be. How is that being reported or, you know, what is, where's the breakdown in that? You know, happening.
That ties into like the communication aspect where it's been.
Yeah.
It's been just tough to get in touch with Whitsons because they don't have like an actual manager onsite most of the time. So normally we either communicate from email. And a lot of times it's just tough to get in contact.
Okay. And then the other part too was there, there was um an indication that there's feedback and opportunity to give feedback right on on the menu um during, which I thought was really, 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 you know, great. Um, so maybe just that that communication piece that you're talking about is just getting that out there for students to give the feedback. So um so that we can have that documented at some point when if it's if it's a matter of them not being responsive to feedback, you know, versus, you know, what is the work that they're trying to do? I think that would be really helpful for um also for the school, necessary for the school committee to uh hear about as well. So it was very lively group, I will tell you. I did actually at one point think I was at a school committee meeting because it got very energetic. Um, and but it was great. The ideas were very varied and there was a lot of participation and uh everyone was very welcoming. So um kudos to to you and and the team there.
Thanks, Amaro.
Hi, um, I'm I'm wondering about whether or not this this, a lot of this discussion about the food also is um going down to Fowler and I don't know about Green Meadow. I guess Green Meadow also because I have also heard some um not, you know, kids from Fowler who have not been happy with the quality or the um like when things are offered, um like when they first get there, not everything is offered. If you are like later in the line, you might get more stuff. So I'm just wondering if that also has been addressed. Does anybody know?
I don't think we've had much communication with Fowler or Green Meadow. I think part of that is, I mean, yeah, I don't know. I feel like SAC doesn't really talk with people in Green Meadow or Fowler that much. If you wanted us to, that could be definitely same we could set up though.
Well, I just think that um that if you're already in talks with the people with Whitsons that at least try and include that, you know, those schools also. Um, I don't, I don't know if there there's that feedback form at Fowler.
We that feedback form is just a proposal. It doesn't exist yet.
Oh.
Oh.
All right. So um, I don't know if there's a way that we can, um, Brian, is there a way that we can, you know, have some communication at Fowler?
Yeah, why don't we let Liam and that group, the subcommittee who's working with Whitsons in terms of food and it sounds like you're on the way to having a form. Continue that conversation and sort of put that process together and then it sounds like it would be easily to implement in at least Fowler for sure. Because those the students are more than old enough to fill out a form um and gather some feedback from there as well. And from my interactions with um Sue, who's sort of the, I think she's the kitchen manager, but I'm not sure of titles within Whitsons. Um, she seems very receptive to wanting to work with the students and wanting to make the appropriate changes and really trying to. Um, and I think Liam mentioned it already, recognizing that supply and demand has been a challenge this year on a multitude of levels from staffing to actually getting the product itself. But she's been very open to, I think, I don't know where Liam went. He's off screen, but um, it sounded from my interactions that they were very open to working together to try and just improve things as we go along.
I think Liz wanted to make a comment too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Principal York. Oh, let me see here.
Hi, um. The feedback forms actually have already been provided by Whitsons. They are linked to every menu item on the Whitsons online menu. If you take a look at my most recent um smore, my monthly newsletter, I had a short article about uh the Whitsons menu and this new feature in their interactive menu where the students can rate each dish and give feedback. So all they have to do is follow a link or follow the link from the website, go to the Whitsons menu and they can interact with each dish that was offered.
Do you know if they have that also for at Fowler? Is that just for the high school?
I don't know, but I certainly could ask for an investigation into that. I think the students would be very interested in interacting with their counterparts at Fowler for this um like mini research project to find out.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, and and just following up on that, Principal York, um Liam, you know how we keep talking about having a Fowler piece of the SA SAC? So that would be a nice way for you guys to network um to down at that level. So um and um I just regarding Whitsons, we had them three years ago and they were really, really good. Um, I think the well, the reason that we went with fresh starts was because it, you know, was the price was better, but um, so I'm thinking that part of it is definitely the, you know, supply, um, supply issue because they they were very, very receptive. And it's the same, a lot of the same higher ups that were here three years ago. So um anyway, so but we just keep working on them and we do keep working, talking to them also on the wellness committee um also. And I just, um, Principal York, this is sort of for you. Um, if you could just reach out to the teachers and say, thank you, thank you, thank you for extending their their time after school to help the the students with their um midterms and that. It would be, you know, we really, really, really appreciate it. So thank you for that. That's it.
Mary, can I just ask a follow-up question? Uh, Hillary, is it okay? Um, just the Winston's representative, they are at the wellness committee meeting?
There, there is, um, Charles, yes, yeah, um, maybe unmute, Charles. It's the person. Um, that's why when Liam said there's not actually a manager, they definitely have a person.
Um.
Um, yes, Sue Mitchell Chang. Yeah, I mean, what I was gonna say, we can um help facilitate meetings with uh the high school of group and um and Sue anytime. We can, I know they're very busy, but we can, we can, we can help. Uh, I I think it would be really help. I think it'd be really good to meet more often with the group, so.
It sounds like, yeah, there's just this this initial rough patch just to kind of get things settled and.
She's been very cooperative with us, so I I don't, I don't think it's a problem. But I think it would be really good to have more uh face-to-face meetings with the students.
Yeah, I hate to hear that it kind of like feels like it bubbles up and we're heading into like, you know, midterms and stuff and it's a lot more anxious and um, you know, one of the things someone said which was worrying is that they 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 felt like they had no options to eat because um they had ham, ham sa- or they had grilled cheeses, but they had ham in it. So the vegetarian, again, it goes back to that vegetarian option. But there was also this um, the salad bar, I guess. Again, this goes back to maybe the communication piece of, so a lot of couple pieces here. I'm hoping that will work their way through and look forward to hearing um hearing an update later. So yeah, I think that if we can get the wellness um through there, maybe to facilitate some conversation if that's the audience is there, that might be good.
Yeah, I'm hearing from the vegetarian students at Fowler that they're hungry after lunch um because of lack of vegetarian protein. Um, and like they'll have salad, but it's just lettuce um by the time they get to their lunch and stuff. So it'd be great to make sure that those kids are, I don't want any kid hungry, but um.
The menus, the menus do, you can review them on all three schools.
Oh, great.
If people want to review, they can. It's the same, it's the same setup in each of the schools. I don't, I I since no one has rated yet, though, you can't, I don't really notice like you can give it stars and give it a rating, but I'm not sure what that, how that shows up next time it comes up in the menu.
It might be helpful to see after, like if that data is being shared like with the students afterwards. Like, you know, like that once the Whitsons has it and they can like, okay, this is the ratings that we're getting for the meals and that can, it should help inform.
It looks like it might even be public so that is it coming up like every time you see the steak and cheese, it comes up and you're like, this is for steak and cheese. It's a three-star meal. You know, that kind of thing. Um, and then what does that matter? So anyway, that's.
And and Brian, following up on that, if you could let um Mike and Dave know at the Fowler that that, you know, so that they could maybe put it out in their smores. Um, also a note, because it's great to have it there, but for them not to be, you know, not to know to share it with with their parents and students.
Thank you. Um, any other questions for Liam? Thank you so much, Liam. It's really helpful um to hear all your input. And I, we had the um athletic trainer in our request for the budget last year and unfortunately there wasn't funding, but hopefully we can get that soon because um, we appreciate that it's important and even more so hearing from the students. And I think also even more so um with the accident that happened at the football game, you know, a couple of days ago, how important it is to have someone available um that can respond in an emergency in addition to the longer-term rehab type stuff. Um, Principal York?
Just unmute.
Yep, I just clicked on it, but.
Yes, uh, gener- uh, the um part-time athletic trainer has already generously been funded through our athletic line and we do have a posting out. Unfortunately, there's a huge shortage of athletic trainers right now in the state of Massachusetts, but we're very hopeful, hopeful, fingers crossed that we'll find the right person to take that part-time job. And then maybe over the next couple of years, we can grow that into a full-time position because uh Liam's absolutely correct. Uh, students are getting injured, seriously injured, and the statistics do show MIAA supports a full-time athletic trainer at every school because they spend time with athletes before the injuries happen.
Um, also just wondering, what is the status? Um, do the coaches tend to have CPR certifications and training in an AED?
They all do. Yes, they've all taken the, we provided it with the alongside the students after school. Staff and coaches took it after school and the freshmen and sophomores took it during the day.
I know one concern is that there's no AED, like the like defibrillator.
Yeah.
At uh alumni, so the nearest one, if someone was gonna have like a situation at alumni, they would have to run back to the school, go indoors, grab it and then come back out, which might be too late. I know that was a big thing that a lot of us talked about.
Liam, that's, that is not actually accurate. Every coach has had a training packet and I went to the training that uh Mr. Ria provided for all the coaches. There is um, there are mobile defibrillators and um they're part of a first aid pack that the coaches are supposed to be picking up before taking groups over to alumni or to away games. And Mr. Ria is reinforcing after that very frightening football injury earlier this week. Mr. Ria is reinforcing with every coach how important it is to pick up that mobile defib pack.
I know that was a big.
If the students are aware of cases where it's not available, is that something that you guys could share with one of the principals so that they can make sure that, you know, if there's a new coach that missed the training or something that it's caught?
Yep, that would be, yeah, absolutely. I would be on the phone to Mr. Ria immediately if I heard about that.
Great. Thank you so much.
It's a new procedure and so some of the coaches who are used to old ways may not have picked it up every single time. But yes, it is there and waiting for them.
Okay.
Super important, especially in any sport that has any kind of contact whatsoever that that defibrillator be available as as close as possible. Thank you for bringing that up, Liam.
Thank you. Thank you, Liam, for all of everything that you're sharing with us. It's really helpful. I appreciate all the time you're spending helping us be informed.
Thank you. I'm gonna need to go to this, like the stu- oh my god, I keep getting the mix of a school student council, student council. I need to go to the student council meeting, so I'm gonna.
Thank you. Good luck on your midterms.
Um, okay, for the MCAS presentation, um, Brian and um Chuck.
I'm going to just, I just want to give Chuck a nice introduction there. It's been my pleasure to work with him in a different capacity this year. He, since I came to Maynard, he was originally the high school principal and did a phenomenal job there in a multitude of ways and has since come to central office and really jumped in and just made lots of connections and relationship building. And one of the tasks that he has been worked on, there's several, um, has to do with MCAS and really helping us look at data and helping the buildings, you know, through the principals, look at that data and most importantly, really looking at, so we've had COVID and we've got some different scores on MCAS, but what are we doing and how are we addressing that moving forward? So with no further ado, I'm gonna turn it over to
Thank you, Brian. Um, I don't know, Colleen, if you could bring that up? Thank you. This is comparing data from pre and post COVID. Um, and to give you some sense of how the Maynard district has done uh internally, but also uh with some state comparisons that come toward the end of the presentation. Uh, you know, I'm not gonna read the slides. You obviously you can see them, but just in in brief, I think every district is wondering to what extent uh COVID impacted student learning among a multitude of things that COVID impacted. Um, and so uh given the length of time involved, the, and instrument that really is is normed and can allow you to look at students before and after COVID is the MCAS test. Um, and it allows us to look at how we've done internally, but also against the state as a whole as everyone in the state was impacted by uh COVID. The first group of slides uh actually come from the security portal. Uh, and um what I did is I took out uh data that doesn't reveal student, individual student information. If you go into the security portal, if you have authorization, um, you can actually see each individual student's scores as well as their response to every single MCAS question. So needless to say, that's confidential. Um, but what I can do is uh pull out um this type of data that that looks at groupings. And um, so if we go to the next slide, the first item we'll see is actually how our students did. And this is non-high school MCAS takers. So this is a gross number. Uh, this is grades three through eight. Um, specifically uh in English language arts. Uh, you can see that uh the MCAS test uh that was used was the same instrument. Uh, it's MCAS two point O. Um, that was used in two thousand nineteen and two thousand and twenty-two. You can see that the students who took MCAS, all five hundred and forty-seven of them uh lost about three and a half uh points uh in um their ELA score. You can also see various subgroups. The high needs group as a whole lost about two points. Um, and there are breakouts by individual subgroups. Um, a question people might have is, how come high needs is two hundred and thirty-eight, but then all the high needs groups add up to more than two hundred and thirty-eight? That's because some students qualify in more than one category. Um, so uh we do have two hundred and thirty-eight high need students whose scores declined by two points. You can see low-income students actually nosed up the hair. I don't think that's statistically significant. Um, EL and former EL students went down about a point. Um, you can see students with disabilities took a a larger decline. Um, and so, and you can see that. Um, and so, and you can see that uh multirace, non-Hispanic students took something of a decline as well. Um, so this overall decline is extremely consistent with state declines that were that were seen uh in grades three through eight. If you go on to the next slide, we do see the high school breakout separately. Um, I think you all know that high school ELA is essentially the 10th grade period. So this is, this is 10th grade scores. 10th grade scores did decline by two points overall. Um, it's interesting to note that the decline was actually among white students primarily. Um, and that our high needs group actually increased in score by almost 10 points. The gap between uh all students and high need students was halved compared to two thousand and nineteen. Um, I have some ideas about why this happened. Um, we did bring all of our high need students into the school. We had staff who were willing to come in and work with them even during COVID. Uh, students received a lot more individualized support in a much quieter school environment. Um, because it was essentially the high need students in the building um with the other students uh learning remotely. Uh, so I think there are some lessons for us to to learn from that in terms of, you know, uh intensive intervention. Uh, clearly yielding some big gains, even in a COVID environment uh for our high need students. So that's the high school ELA scores. If you move on to the next slide, we'll take a look at math next. In the composite scores for non-high school students, again, this is grades three through eight. Uh, there was a five-point four-point decline among all students, four-point six among high need students. MCAS scores in math took a significantly bigger hit statewide. So again, these declines are 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 consistent with uh state declines. And again, you see the subgroup breakouts. Uh, students with disabilities uh had a four-point decline. And Hispanic and Latino students actually had a six-point decline in math. So uh, there are some indicators there for groups of students that we were going to need to particularly work with. Um, again, you see the group, the breakouts by cohorts. Elizabeth actually uh sent me an email today saying that some of the Ns, which is just the number of students in these categories, didn't make much sense to her or to me, frankly. Um, the notion that in grades three through eight, we have five students who are Asian. Uh, simply isn't accurate, as near as I can tell, just by walking through the buildings. But some of this is based on how students enroll and self-report regarding race. So there's to me some uh. There's some things to not necessarily uh view all the, all the total numbers as completely reliable in in some of the subgroups there. Um, so that's something that I'm gonna need to try to figure out how to dig into a little bit better. Um, but uh, again, these score declines were consistent with the state. And uh, as you'll see later in the presentation, we were taking steps to try to address concerns. Even before the results were released and we've taken further steps since the results have been released, but we'll get to that a little bit later in the presentation. If you go on to the the next uh information is actually the math achievement scores in the high school. Um, again, this is 10th grade, just 10th grade. Uh, I, my eyebrows went way up when I initially saw this data. Our math scores climbed in two thousand and twenty-two compared to two thousand and nineteen overall. And high need students gained fifteen and a half points, I think it is. Is that right? Thirteen and uh, I'm sorry, twelve-point-three points, a huge uh increase. Um, I'm I'm saying that wrong. Uh, I'm looking at the differential. Hang on, pause, eighteen, slow down, Chuck. Uh, nine, eleven, uh, what's that? Uh, fourteen-point-four points, I believe it is. Uh, that's a staggering increase, again, having the gap among the our high need students. Um, and uh, I think there was a lot of intensive work done at the high school to support students around math. Uh, even through COVID and uh, we actually had score gains, which I don't think very many districts had score gains in mathematics in 10th grade. And I doubt almost any districts were seeing gap closing like we're seeing between the high need students and all students. So that was uh heartening to see uh from from those scores. Um, moving on to science. Um, the uh, which is the next slide. Uh, this is uh grades, uh, actually the science scores are only three grades. Um, and that's why the N is smaller, science is given every year. Uh, during uh a student's career, it's specifically given in eighth grade, uh, fifth grade. And uh. Actually, that is it. It's fifth and uh, fifth and eighth and in uh. Uh, along with 10th grade. So this is non-high school students. Uh, you can see, again, there's about a four-point decline. It is greater among high need students. Particular concerns with low-income students uh and uh with Hispanic, Latino students related to science scoring. Again, these are pretty consistent with state losses. Um, and finally. There's uh on the next slide, the high school science performance. This is a little dicier to parse out. Because in the 10th grade level, in two thousand and nineteen, students were taking MCAS one point O. And in two thousand and twenty-two, they were taking MCAS two point O. So the state actually changed the instrument of measure. Um, before and after COVID. So what you can look at is the composite performance index. Which is the percentage of students who scored proficient or advanced in two thousand and nineteen. You can see in two thousand and nineteen, eighty-one point three percent of students scored proficient or advanced in the ninth grade. There was a substantial gap to high need students, uh fifty-four and a half percent of students in two thousand and nineteen. Who were in the high needs categories um scored proficient or advanced. Because the cohort size, the N, is less than twenty in the 10th grade for every single subgroup. Um, you don't get further breakouts. The state deems that that is uh statistically, once you're below twenty, you're statistically uh to a uh sample size. That doesn't yield reliable results. So you can look at the aggregate group of high need students who were in the 10th grade. There were twenty-two of them. Um, uh, and uh, that group as a whole uh was substantially below um. The uh group as a whole. When you go over to two thousand and twenty-two. Uh, you are now looking in MCAS two point O. You can see that the students who scored five oh five as a group, that's essentially proficient. Um, and high need students were lagging by about fifteen points. Uh, and again, that it's it's much more difficult to tease out. Which subgroups were impacted the most. Again, in the security portal, though, you can look at each individual student. So we can, we can figure out who the students are who need the most support. We uh don't want to break them out here because some of these cohorts are so small, you're virtually naming students. Uh, so we're clearly not gonna, gonna do that. Um, the next slide, this is available to the public. This isn't uh from the security portal. This is from Massachusetts School and District Profiles that people can access online. Um, there were twenty different categories here. Uh, I'm not gonna show you twenty different slides. Uh, that might be. Uh, that no, no one deserves that level of MCAS torture. Um, so what you can see, though, is if you wanted to, you could go to Massachusetts School and District Profiles from Maynard. You can click on every one of these headings that you see listed below. Uh, grade three English, grade three math. The graph you're seeing is specifically grade three English. But if you went to the site and clicked on grade three math, you'd get a similar graph for math. You could go through every single grade through through 10th grade if you want to do that. You can see numerically all the grades together, though, which is, which is why I have this slide. Um, and what I noticed was uh is that, again, there were declines in some of our grades, notably grades uh three, four and five. Uh, that were consistent with state losses. Um, but you'll, you can also see that starting in grade uh six, seven, eight. Um, the student growth percentiles uh climb. Um, and uh, in, in what I'll do now is move, if if it's okay, I'll just move to what takeaways we get from from all of this data. But again, if if you want to see Maynard or any district, so if you wanted to compare Maynard to Concord or Maynard to Hudson. Uh, you can go to the the state um, Desi uh Massachusetts School and District Profiles. You can click through every single district, grade by grade, and and see the aggregate gate data. Uh, some of the takeaways we have, uh, overall, high school student achievement in ELA grade ten showed a minimal reduction. Um, students in the high needs category had a substantial gain. Um, so that was uh heartening. Uh, high school students in math actually showed an increase, which is stunning. Uh, students in the high needs category again showed very large gains, closing the gaps. Um, overall, student achievement in science showed an estimated eight and a half percent in the composite index. Which measures the percentage of students meeting state performance targets. Um, from eighty-one to eighty-nine percent, you can glean that from comparing a few of the previous slides. I do want to caution that due to the change in testing instrument, direct conclusions are difficult to draw. But as I look at, as I look at uh the scores involved, it's likely that the um. Uh, students narrowed the gap between high needs and all students at a pace consistent with the ELA and MCAS scores. If you remember the slide, a few slides back, uh, the uh student scoring proficient and advanced. Um, as a group were eighty-one point three with high need students at fifty-four point three, which is a huge gap. Although there's still a substantial gap in MCAS two point O, it doesn't reflect as large a gap as as previously recorded. But I'm very cautious about saying much more than that because you are looking at two different instruments of measure. Um, and I don't think, you know, the state on a good day has basically admitted that uh you you really can't reliably compare the the two sets. Um, if you move on to the takeaways, grades three to eight. Overall, there was a decline in achievement consistent with state declines in ELA. Um, notable decline among EL students was observed. Overall, students in three-day showed declines in math, again, consistent with the state. The aggregate scores in five to eight showed a drop in uh science uh and uh. The larger declines were among low students from low-income families, as well as students with disabilities and Hispanic Latino students. In general, the overall declines in three to eight were consistent with all state declines. But I do want to point out that when you look at those scores more closely. Uh, the declines were driven largely in grades three, four and five, the real little guys. I think it probably makes a certain amount of uh sense in this, in terms of it isn't surprising that our youngest students. As time went on, probably struggled the most with learning at home. Um, if you look at grade six, seven and eight, uh, the SGP was actually sixty-one, much higher. Um, thirty-eight, by the way, is at the lower end of the middle third of all students. Um, sixty-one is at the upper end of the middle third of all students statewide. So there really is a. Pretty significant difference in the student uh growth rates, uh, six, seven, eight compared to three, four and five. We're we're very much aware of that. Um, if we go on to the next slide, please. Um, some conclusions and and then some of what we've been doing follows that. Students at Maynard High School did extremely well comparing twenty nineteen scores to twenty twenty-two scores. Achievement gaps were also significantly cut uh between uh all students and high need students. Students in the Green Meadow, grade three, Fowler grades four to eight, showed overall score drought drops uh comparable to statewide totals. But again, uh, it really, it's almost a tale of two cities, grades three to eight. Three of our grades showed the biggest declines. Three of our grades actually showed relatively strong performance. Um, some steps we've already taken are on the next slide. Prior to the release of the MCAS data, uh, we knew that students were gonna need support. Uh, we put summer enrichment programs uh were put in place to prevent learning loss and help students eliminate gaps in learning. Um, a new literacy curriculum has been implemented in grades K to eight. Um, teams in all three buildings were monitoring student attendance very closely when we came out of COVID. Um, and the high school implemented a credit recovery program for in-school and out-of-school use by students. So um, you know, those were steps we took before we even saw any official data. Um, since the release. Um, and if you could scroll up a little more, uh, Colleen. Um, since since the release, uh, we've brought in Novak Educational Consulting. Uh, they've worked with Green Meadow and Fowler Teaching to uh really help bring universal design. Um, for learning into uh planning by our teachers. Uh, we formed a mathematics curriculum review team that's currently gathering data and that group is really starting to pick up steam. Um, this is to improve students' math performance uh across the district. The Fowler School on its own initiative, right after the MCAS data came out. Um, Mike Barth and his staff sat down and looked at their schedule. And we're actually able to make some schedule modifications designed to increase learning time in ELA and math. So students at the Fowler uh are uh since the data was released, have uh essentially been receiving more direct instruction and support in ELA and math. Um, we've brought in the Amplify CKLA people who are the folks that we purchased our new literacy curriculum from. Uh, they've been working with teams in three to eight to help our teachers uh understand the curriculum as fully as possible. And uh, to show them every feature possible uh and get them used to to using the new materials. Uh, we have a group of future recommendations on the next slide, and this is the final slide. Um, we want to be closely monitoring all students pre-K to twelve for academic behavioral and academic purposes and attendance purposes. Um, that's happening at all three buildings. Uh, we're trying to get additional support to students through early intervention. Um, right away, uh, some of our MTSS staff uh that we've been able to bring on have been extremely helpful in that regard. Uh, they've been doing data analysis, particularly at the Green Meadow and Fowler. Uh, in showing that data, working with the grade level teams to uh help them understand where points of emphasis need to be in instruction. Uh, they uh also spend some time, uh, not uh all their day, but they spend some time doing tier-two interventions with students that have been identified. As uh being particularly uh behind post-COVID. So uh, there are tier-two and three interventions that are happening. We would like to see those continue to happen in the future. We want to continue the summer enrichment programs. We want to continue the summer enrichment programs, uh, which are hands-on camp-style activities to support math and ELA topics, um, as well as science topics and other topics. I mean, it's social emotional learning in those, uh, summer programs has been phenomenal as well. And the math curriculum review teamwork will continue as we, we look at, uh, we're replacing our Go Math curriculum, which is about to, uh, go completely out of print. Um, and also, uh, we'll be expanding, uh, the curriculum review process into, uh, additional subject areas. Um, going forward, so we get the district back on a proper curriculum review cycle, which the district hasn't had a true curriculum review cycle in at least ten years. So this is work that in some sense feels like starting over, but I think as, uh, we work through with the math team. Um, I, I, I think everyone's getting a handle on, on how this can work and, and all the subject areas. So, uh, that's the presentation and, uh, I'm sure it was so thorough, there'll be no questions. Um, and, uh, we'll, we'll move on from there, but should there be a question, um, please?
Thank you so much. That was really helpful and I liked the layout a lot and the takeaways being so clearly defined and what's already been done. Um, do folks have questions? Mary?
Yes, sorry Chuck. Thank you very much for the presentation. It was really well done and there are some nice takeaways, which is wonderful to see too. Um, cause I think we all figured it was all going to be doom and gloom, but, um, a couple of just, um, questions about different things that are going on. So more about the steps that are being taken in that. You mentioned that Novak Educational Consulting is working with Green Meadow and Fowler, um, for the UDL. How much help are they actually? How many times have they been in and, and what's the future? You know, is it?
So we, we've, uh, we've had a couple of avenues that teachers have been availing themselves of. We have had people come in from Novak. They've met particularly with the third grade team and we had a discussion just today about having them increase their work, particularly with the grades four and five teams as well as we expand. They've had multiple meetings with the grade three team in person and the grade three team is actually asking for them back. Uh, they're, they're finding, they're finding that work with the representative very helpful. Another avenue though is the Professional Development Committee. Novak has, uh, online courses that, uh, teachers can complete. And, uh, we've had a number of staff members report that those online courses are actually extremely helpful. And we've had an increasing number of, uh, staff members signing up for and taking those courses. I actually, Brian took one of the courses to kind of, you know, test drive and, and see. And, uh, so we have teachers doing it asynchronous time to, uh, increase their, uh, skills, uh, in universal design. And we have representatives from Novak coming in and working directly with staff.
Excellent. Any thoughts on having them come in and work with the kids younger than third grader, the staff younger than the third grade? Because, but you know, a lot happens between yeah, kindergarten and third grade to get to those scores.
I think what we were looking at is where we have brand new curriculum, grades three to eight, to have them really help folks right from the get-go with the new curriculum. Uh, uh, packages in, uh, Novak has actually worked with Amplify and CKLA, CKLA in the past. So we're sort of starting there, but I think, uh, we're, we're looking at expanding the, uh, interaction through other grades as well. So that, that'll, I mean.
Thank you. Um, and how is Fowler actually, how did they restructure things so that they could add more, um, time on learning? Do you know?
What they did is they shaved small numbers of minutes from the, uh, from the specials, basically. Uh, and, um, by shaving, you know, just a couple of minutes from all of the specials, you could take that pile of minutes that kind of builds up and apply them particularly to ELA and math. So they were able to, uh, in, expand the instructional time that way. So they didn't quote unquote, you know, cut, you know, it's not like no music or, or no what, it, it was more like if we did that, like three or four minutes here, three or four minutes there, uh, and shifted those over. Um, and as a result, they were able to, uh, in, increase the learning time. Uh, and they worked very closely with the staff to come up with, uh, with that. Um, it's something that the teachers themselves were, uh, highly in favor of doing. Um, and the, uh, MTSS folks, Lauren and Meg, um, really worked with Mike and the staff to develop, uh, the schedule change to, to, to really particularly focus on the fourth and fifth grade, because if you look back at the, the slide, you'll see that those were the grades at the Fowler where, where the, where the, uh, student growth was significantly lower than grades, uh, six, seven and eight. I also think grade six, seven and eight is when students have teachers, uh, in ELA and math who focus just on E, E, they're specialists basically. So I think, uh, that, uh, might have something to do with it as well. But there has been, uh, this very cooperative effort by the fourth and fifth grade teams to shift, uh, learning time over more toward ELA and math.
Greatly appreciate them. Um, any thoughts on maybe making the same suggestion down at Green Meadow? Is there any way that we might be able to do something?
Actually, Rob and Karen are looking at that right now.
Grace.
One thing, uh, Rob and Karen have done is they really have identified students who, uh, were showing particular losses. And, uh, those have been working in very small groups with the MTSS teachers. Um, or, you know, a chunk each day. And those students that they're working with are showing substantial gains and the kids are showing, uh, at least anecdotally, I was talking to Rob, uh, just today, Rob and Karen just today. Uh, the kids themselves are excited, like they can tangibly feel themselves like moving ahead. So, um, you know, so it isn't, uh, it isn't a scheduling solution that they're looking at for right now, but they have identified kids in particular needing support and are getting them that kind of tier two.
Great. Thank you very much.
Thanks Natasha.
Yeah, so I just was, um, you know, just for context, I wasn't really sure the scores for that we have, a lot of them are partially meeting, right? That's what we're, we saw a little bit, because I know that the gra, the graphs didn't really
Right.
delineate, um, but there was an increase in, in many areas for partially, so anything, what, what are the numbers if it's under, um, if it's under five hundred, I think it's
Five hundred is proficient, so
Five hundred is meeting, five hundred to five twenty-nine is meeting. Four hundred and seventy to four hundred and ninety-nine is partially meeting. And four hundred and forty to four hundred and sixty-nine. So really, we need to be striving for five hundred and higher is what, is what we should. So, so all those areas, and I, and I totally get the, the state as a whole has not, you know, COVID impacted area. I think pre-COVID, if we look at pre-COVID numbers, some of these areas were also, um, partially meeting or not meeting as well below the five hundred. So, um, it would be, um, it's tough. And I honestly, on a personal level, I don't really like the MCAS, generally speaking. I know it is a measure, a data measure that we, we do have to follow. So I, you know, I, it is, it is what it is. So how do we, how do we best, you know, work with what we have as a, a tool? I just want to make sure for context that we understand that the numbers, although we had growth in some of those areas and I, the 10th grade was one of those areas, which is great to see that, that growth. Um, in many of the areas that you have below five hundred, that means that we are either partially meeting or not meeting expectation. So that isn't something I, in my gut, feel something that we should be a lot to be celebrating. Um, and I know it's not no fault of any individual person, but circumstances, but I, I think it's something worth striving to, to continue to work on, which I'm glad to hear. Um, I did have a couple of questions about the Novak. Is there, um, can the school committee be provided with their consulting recommendations that they've been sharing with the district on what those efforts that they've, you know, whatever they're working towards to, um, suggest, to implement, to change?
I can contact, uh, Rob and Mike and ask them to get more specific information.
It'd be great that we can get like what in writing, what are the, the information that they're providing? And, you know, maybe in context with that, what are we doing directly, you know, in response to what they're recommending? What can't we do? You know, just hearing, you know, maybe there's funding issues that we need to consider that, you know, we just can't, you know, but if there are best practices that, you know, we, um, that need funding requirements that we're not able to, for whatever reason. I, I just want to make sure that, that we hear it at that level, like these are, these are things that are being recommended for whatever reason. Um, and in my mind, just from a, a strategic process is that we also just had a lot of budgetary numbers shared. This is where I'm going with that with us, that the draft numbers are coming in far below what we require for level service. So when we talk about impact to learning, you know, and what we need to do to move forward, it is, it is scary that, you know, how is programmatically what might, you know, be occurring in our district in FY twenty-four. Um, you know, given our students that need support still. So yeah, if we can get some type of written, uh, report at some point from Novak to hear about what their consulting recommendations have been during the year, that would be great. Um, I also wanted to see, given the, the supports that needed in the lower grades in particular. Um, I know this was mentioned, uh, at one point CPAC, but can we have, um, CKLA Amplify do a presentation or work with parents like for, because they are partners, you know, in, in the education, um, world for, for, for the students. And I know that some of the, you know, some of its technology pieces, they may not be, you know, they're not educators at home, but it'd be great that they could understand what, um, you know, going into fourth grade, third grade, going to fourth, if there are certain components that they could be more supportive at home um, for this, these new curriculum that are being, uh, rolled out. I think that would be really beneficial to be like, this is what we're working on at the school for literacy and this is what you, you should be hearing feedback about, right? And this is what your child should be saying. Um, and that might, I don't know, it might be helpful to have some questions for parents. It'd be like, you know, it also teaches them information about literacy that maybe that they need to hear as well.
Um, I can certainly, uh, inquire with CK, with Amplify basically and see if they'd be able to do a presentation. Um, I, I guess the, the one thing I would say very briefly, uh, about the new literacy and I'm talking about kindergarten through grade eight, uh, and three to eight is Amplify. Um, we are implementing all of it this year for the first time. Uh, we, uh, we actually had a meeting today and I spoke to Mike, uh, Barth and, um, uh, Rob and Karen from the, uh, uh, Green Meadow, uh, specifically about how, how is it looking? Not surprisingly, only four months in, uh, they're just starting to do, uh, rounds of, um, uh, assessment to, to look at student growth. So this is four months is a very small sample size. It's looking like students are showing, uh, gains, particularly in grade three. Um, and, uh, also K to two, um, which is not Amplify. Um, so the Green Meadow seems to be trending upward, but again, uh, anytime something is novel, uh, you should really look at it with a grain of salt, the novelty effect, you know, statistically speaking. Uh, you tend to see climbs or even dips because something is new. Um, and, uh, in grades four and five, the initial data is actually very small declines. Um, but again, it's a brand new program. The kids aren't used to it. The teachers are, are still getting used to it. Um, and, uh, you're really not going to be seeing more reliable data for another couple of years realistically, because I'll just say this quickly, if a student's in fourth, if a student is in actually eighth grade next year, that means they'll have the new curriculum in grade seven and eight. Um, they will not have had the full curriculum as designed from grades three through eight. So how reliable is that data compared to a student who's been in it, who's been in the same curricular uh, model for three years, four years, five years? So there's, there's going to be a, uh, a lag of a couple of years before the data starts to firm in a way that we can, can view with more what I can say right now is the very early stuff at Green Meadow looks good. The very early stuff in grades four and five is down just a tick, but that isn't surprising either. Obviously we'll assess further in the spring and, uh, we'll, we'll have a, at least one year now of data under our belt and, and we'll move on from there.
And I wasn't meaning that, that the data would be shared with a parent. So I was more meaning, if that's what you were thinking, I was meaning more of the, the product itself and the functionality. Right. And what, you know, how they might be able to support their children at home. Um, with, with whatever it is, because, uh, like I said, at that grade level, what you, you alluded to earlier, those younger grades. Um, parents do have a really large, you know, handle in supporting with reading and all of that. Um, so is there a way that, you know, parents could be trained on a little bit more of the, the, the curriculum that is being used to be more supportive at home? And so that maybe they could ask questions themselves. I want to make sure that we, you know, the outreach to parents as partners in the education for their kids is really intent and how we're engaging them, you know, to, as, along with teachers, their feedback, but parents as well. I mean, if it's not being supported at home as we need it to be, then that's an issue, right? We may not ever see the growth that we, we want to see and if they're not under, so I want to make sure that opportunity is, is there in whatever curriculum that is that we're, it'll be, it'll probably lend for more success as well.
Okay, I'll reach out to them and we'll let you know.
I know we had something with safety care for parents at one point, just a curriculum where they come and speak about de-escalation, all those things that just very high level, but, um, it brings reassurances to parents on what's being taught and how it's being taught.
Okie doke.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Maro? Um, I think, I think overall, um, you know, it, obviously it would be great if we were more overall over the five hundred mark, um, on, you know, the majority of this stuff, but, um, I think it's, I was, honestly, I was expecting like a bigger drop um, between two thousand nineteen and two thousand twenty-two. So I was pleasantly surprised, I guess, to, to see that the, the drops aren't nearly as, as huge. Um, and, you know, similar to Chuck, you know, the, the, the jump, at least in the math was surprising. Um, so, um, I think that this, the way that you laid this out was really helpful. Um, and, you know, I liked, I liked the fact that you have already, um, made changes since, you know, you had made changes at the beginning of the year before we got the MCAS results, but then also, you know, making more changes. How, you know, trying to, to help, um, close the, these gaps. So I appreciate that. Thank you. It's just good.
Elizabeth? Um, yeah, thank you Chuck for all of the information. I appreciate it. Um, and I just, I thank you guys said a lot already, but I just want to point out, um, one thing I was just kind of doing some math, um, while Chuck was speaking and noticing that one thing that I just think we should keep our eye on as a district is that, um, the, the number of kids, the percentage of kids who are high needs in the lower grades is also higher. You know, so at the, at the, the kids who took the MCAS at the, at the high school level, forty-four percent were, um, were, um, on ed plans and it's in, um, I'm sorry, in the, that's in the lower grades, right? And then the high school's only thirty-seven percent. Um, and, uh, in the low income category, it was thirty percent in the lower grades and twenty-five percent in the high school. And for L students, it was ten percent in lower grades and only two percent in the high school. So I think, so I think that as, as we're thinking about, um, how we're doing it as a school district, um, the fact that our MCAS scores are lower in the lower grades and that we have higher need kids down there is something that we should be thinking about and I'm is something that we should be thinking about and I'm glad we are already thinking about that and being proactive, but I think that is something to keep our eye on.
I just had two quick questions. One is, um, for the NOVAC consulting, I know some of that money was coming from SR funds. Is there money for that to continue next, next year?
Actually, we, we signed a contract with NOVAC a couple of years ago and they've been extremely flexible in allowing us to, it was a fairly significant sum. They've been very flexible with allowing us to spread it out over multiple years. So they kind of view it as you signed up for you know, sixty thousand dollars worth of service. We don't need to cram all sixty thousand dollars into a year. So they actually last year said, why don't we put our heads together and come up with a better plan and we actually won't start until this year, like this school year. And so I think we're going to be able to, you know, we will eventually expand all of those funds, but we're able to, they've been very flexible in allowing us to the service as it makes sense rather than cramming the service into one year.
That's great. Um, and then the other thing is you were mentioning that summer programming. Doing the summer programming again this year that was done last year. Is there funding for that? And is that all set in terms of funding?
Yes, it is. We've budgeted for that.
Um, what about the collaboration with the boys? Oh, sorry. Um, what about the collaboration with the Boys and Girls Club that the teachers were doing with grant funds? Um, is that is there funding for that and support for that this summer too?
Actually, the Boys and Girls Club did put in for that again, and we signed our essentially letter of support. I anticipate those funds being available again. So that's actually the grant and they people and pay them. So, so, so that's kind of how that's getting funded.
Okay. Um, and then just because we've, now that it's been brought up, um, when are those dates going to be set and information going to go out to families? I know personally, I'm like starting to look at camp for my kid this summer. Um, and I know that's been a concern in the past that people had already made, signed up for camps for childcare purposes. Do you have an idea of when that will be set?
Let me talk to the principals. Like I know that in the past, it's been essentially the month of July, but you know, getting out the particular dates and hours and stuff like that, we should be able to do that pretty soon. So, uh, let me, let me talk to the three building principals.
Thank you.
Yeah. And I think, you know, we can say the parents going to be July, but you know, July fourth is on a Tuesday this year, for example, so it probably won't start until the fifth and you, you, so you know, everyone wants to know exactly what dates and what times. So we'll, we'll work on that.
I know from my perspective as a parent, just knowing like, you know, you'll have programming for eighth graders the last three weeks of July, or you'll have programming for K through five, the first three weeks of July is enough for me to not put deposits down on those same weeks.
Right.
Natasha? Thank you.
Yep.
Uh, something Beth mentioned, just kind of and picking back on what, what Chuck was talking about, the different, the, the tier one, tier two for special education and what's happening at the elementary. I wonder if it would be possible. We had been doing, we had this done every couple of years. I haven't seen one recently, but we used to get the elementary school special education program, like an evaluation of that. I think there was one in thirteen, sixteen. I don't know if we've had a fully with COVID and stuff in there. We've had a fully robust one and we've had conversations about co-talk classroom and all of these different pieces. I, I, I almost feel it's really a, a point we need to revisit is looking at, you know, where we are because that population is growing in particular. Um, I think some of the, the questions that were asked of, of prior ones is does the district provide full continuum of special education programs from K through three to meet the students and wide range disabilities? Does the elementary level special education and the presenting students warrant the present staffing levels that we have? Are the students with the social emotional behavior concerns being met at the elementary has a district? How does that district identify? So there's a couple of different pieces that were asked from that. And I, I think it might be important to think about that, looking at that lens as well to complement, you know, how are we are, are we able to do, are meeting those needs as well as they're changing? Cause they seem to be changing, you know, co-taught, no co-taught. That more kids being identified as well. And I just want to make sure we have data that isn't helping us inform from a special education lens as well. If those are the numbers that we're seeing also impacted continuing to grow, maybe we need to look at that as well for another evaluation. And, and Charles, I don't know if you remember that, I'd hate to put you on the spot. But I think Dr. Girardi had it done twice in a couple of years and it, it seemed to be like they talked with staff, yeah.
Now, are you talking about the coordinated program review?
Not the coordinated program review per se with the state. This was a consultant that I think was contracted to do internal, like with green, was Green Meadow, not the whole program, but just at the elementary school in particular where.
Yeah, let me go back to our records and, and, and see and we can, we can definitely.
It just might seem to help with, you know, again, getting data to see how we can address things that may need to happen at the earlier level. Where we might need to look more differently. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chuck, for all the work that's went into this and for all the work that the MTSS folks and the principals and all the teachers are doing. I think that we're impressed by the scores that did increase. And I think that's a testament to how committed our staff have been, including things like coming into school. During the shutdown to work with the kids that needed the help the most and we're so lucky to have them. That's really impressive.
Absolutely. The staff was phenomenal through COVID, just phenomenal.
Yeah. Okay, I think we can move on to policy. The first one, yeah, I think. The first one, the disposal of school property, the version that's in the folder is the one that we had seen the first time the policy was on the agenda and then was not the one that we had the last time, but is back now. So this is the third time is on the agenda, but the second time we're seeing this particular version. I think that we're all the questions answered.
Yeah, I think the only question I had outstanding was just making sure that it conformed with their disposal with any other town regulation that I, I didn't know the threshold. Did it? It seemed like, I think Colleen had responded to that. It had.
Okay. I didn't delve into that. Um, are you comfortable with that, those answers?
Mary, maybe, did you have a, Mary, a follow-up question?
I, I had a question about procedures to be followed for disposing. Item number one talks about general fund. Is that the town's general fund or is that the school general fund?
That's the school.
Okay. Do we add that word in there? Do we need to or no?
We need to because it's our policy.
Okay, alright.
I wonder though if we should just because of
Yeah, to me it sounds like.
Like even if we don't need it, would it, should we put it there anyway, just to avoid since so much of the school related money ends up going into the town's general fund?
It sounds like it doesn't harm adding it, right? Anyway, so. I would be in favor of adding that.
Yeah, me too. Yeah. Cause when I first read it, I thought it definitely just goes to the town.
Anyone want to post to that?
No, I'm, I don't think any, yeah.
Natasha, I like the, the, this part that was added about the devices to the students.
Yeah.
And then Natasha, you good with the legal references?
Yes.
Okay. So does anyone have any thoughts or comments or concerns with this one? So do you want to make a motion to approve it?
Is this, um, this is a non-existent policy? We don't have a policy, right? So this is not amending, right? Or this is there is nothing about disposal of any, I thought there was something with books, but I just, do we need to rescind or? That's my only question.
We currently could not find one and that was the problem. The law references, look at your policy and we didn't have one.
This is add new. Okay.
Yeah.
So I'll make a motion that we adopt the amended policy for school committee DN disposal of school property as is recommended with edits.
Second.
A discussion? Okay, roll call Mauro?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Natasha?
Yes.
Elizabeth?
Yes.
And I'm a yes. Okay. The next few, um, Mauro, do you want to discuss those ones, the budget related ones?
Sure. DBJ is the next one. DBJ, we had kind of our, our originals were kind of a mishmash of a bunch of different things. So DBJ actually is part of three oh three and three oh four. So so that's where we're at with that one. Let me just go back.
So we'll have to, just to get my, the steps. Once we're ready to vote, we have to rescind those and adopt these in the same kind of like action, right? We're rescinding those and.
Right. So yes, correct.
And I did put a document in for each of these, these MASC policies that this is the policy to vote on and these are the policies being rescinded.
Thank you, Colleen.
I like how you put it, Colleen, replacing policy three oh three and three oh four right on the policy.
Yeah. It gets crazy like, and then the budget ones were definitely more complicated because we almost had one that just had everything in it. And then Mass was like, nope, everything is a separate action and a separate policy. So it was a little dicey there.
Yeah. Does anybody have questions about this one?
I was gonna say, can we vote on it tonight if nobody has any issues? We don't have.
Oh, no, I'm not going to vote on any. These are all first reads, right?
Right, but it doesn't prevent us from doing it if, if it's easy peasy, but.
Well, so the, the budget transfer authority, this is the one that's, is it, hold on, maybe my understanding, this is the, for cost centers, right? I think what we talked about is outlining the cost centers in the budget. So can that be added as in like a E uh, at the end? Because that's where I know through the years, we've had a lot of issue trying to figure out what the four cost centers were. And it was the ones that we had established and it was transportation and whatever. They weren't always outlined in any one place that anyone could find. So I think outlining it in the policy of what the cost centers are would be beneficial, but I, it could be maybe an exhibit, you know?
Yeah, I think we Hillary, uh, I don't know if you were I'm just trying to think back to our, you know, our subcommittee, whether or not we talked about that and I think we did. And I think we decided that in case things you know, ended up changing, that we weren't going to necessarily put them like in the policy, but you know.
I think they should be in the policy. I mean, if we want to change them, it has to be a school committee vote anyway. And so we would just amend the policy.
What does it add Natasha to add those?
Because if anybody wants to understand what the cost centers are, like these are the things a school committee, as you're, as a new member, you come in, you may not have an understanding of the buckets that you're allowed to, like as a school committee authority. What are the transfers? So it gets at a higher level. These are the levels. When it gets to the granular level of beyond that, we don't have the authority. So it, it, it outlines exactly where that authority is more precisely. Which is not obvious to anyone. And there was a lot of work about creating the cost centers and amending them. So I, I think that it, it should be indicated as of now, like what those cost centers were, because they were in one of the other places seen. It just I don't see the harm in doing it because if they do change, which I don't imagine we're going to be doing anytime soon. The policy is easy enough to amend and there, and if we're not ever on the school committee, whoever's there can easily reference them to see what those it's transparency as well.
I think, cause I think, I mean, we, you, we can, well, first of all, the, we know what the customers are and they are documented somewhere, right?
No.
We have them, we've seen them documented here in this meeting.
We've seen them, but if any person goes to a school committee to understand what those cost centers are, no. And, and I can tell you before we approved the ones recently, we've had many discussions where people weren't even sure about what the four were and as school committee members. And there was like going back and forth because they weren't outlined, anyone, where one place where anyone can go and just reference.
Yeah, because I mean, I, I understand what you're saying about needing a place to reference them, but I'm not sure in this, inside the policy is the place. You know, just because right now we're in a situation where there's a lot of messy little details and a lot of policies that we're having to go back and change. And I imagine the future will hold that same problem for several different school committees. And I don't want this to become a messy little problem that gets overlooked later. But if we have maybe someplace where there's a reference place where people can reference what are our cost centers and that's a standard, then that could be an, an, a way to answer that problem.
But we could say.
Right, it has now, like what the date is, it could be an exhibit, like, because it's the same thing for like the agenda, right? The agenda can change at any time. You know, and you put it as an exhibit to the policy of what people should expect, you know, for that. If we are, you know, posting budget, I just, I do feel that it is important to help inform the public about where the school committee's authority, there's a lot of confusion on what level of granularity the school committee's authority lies as well. And I think that's important to indicate this is where our authority lies in, in approving transfers at this level. And beyond that, it's not something that is in there.
So if we put it as an exhibit and, you know, in, in twenty twenty-seven, uh, the school committee change, you know, changes the cost centers, but they forget to change it in that, in that exhibit. Does that affect anything in a way that we need to think about?
I think at some point that'd be the go-to location to find it. Like right now, if I wanted to find out what the cost centers are, I'd go to our drive and do search cost centers. Where if we're in a policy, I might say like, search the drive of the policies.
I think it provides a, a repository, a, a, a good repository for where it should be indicated. Cause we, we get taught that in the, the, you know, charting the course about your cost centers or whatever. But then I'm like, I went to man, like, I don't know where our cost centers are and it was just hard to, to find. So I don't know if there's harm in putting it there, but.
Well, I wonder if that's, if they're talking about that in charting the course. Why wouldn't mask have put that in there? I mean, this is
Because every, every district defines their own cost center. So some.
Right, but I mean, they could at least have put in, uh, you know, a line saying, you know, and, and put your cost centers, what you have here. You know what I'm saying? So I understand what you're saying. Um, and you know, we have a, a subcommittee meeting next week. So, you know, we can, we can figure out if adding it to the actual policy or making it an exhibit.
I would support making it an exhibit more than adding it to the policy. I kind of like that the policy is nice and neat.
Yeah, that's fine. I think that would be fine. Like it just, like, and it also gives, like, I really think Wayne did a really good job and it had the description of what they were. Kind of like just as an exhibit page of this is what they are, the numbers, this is what it kind of falls in, this is the description of what goes in there. So it's just again, more informative.
Salary chart as an exhibit, right?
Yes.
And that can change.
I think we kind of treated the same way, I think. Well, that's going to change every couple, couple of years or so too.
Yeah. Thank you.
Okay.
But thank you all, because I know this was a big undertaking because they released a whole bunch of financial policies updated again, uh, in one year. So.
Colleen?
The only thing I would suggest, um, not just grammatically, where Wayne suggested the term his, hers. Make it gender neutral to there.
I like that. I saw you did that.
Okay, so then to DK. This is. This is, um, this is another of the, the partials, so this DK, um, is only a partial of three oh three. Um, so. Does anybody have, um, any questions about this one?
Sorry, which, which one, uh, is it?
We're on DK.
DK.
Yeah.
I had just had the one about, um, the second paragraph, it talks about the committee will receive monthly lists of bills. Um, I know right now we get the weekly and Colleen made a better point that, you know, sometimes we get them, you know, um, out of the ordinary. So I'm just wondering if we should change that to timely lists of bills or something like that, so we don't block ourselves into a.
Or just periodic, I mean, so it just, yeah, it doesn't.
Periodic, yep, yeah.
Just say we'll receive list of bills. Actually, I like timely. Yeah, cuz we don't wanna, like, get something at the end of the year that's like.
Yeah, well, yeah, and we also need to pay them. It does kind of support that effort of paying things and within a window, um.
Colleen, do you wanna, um, change that? Or do you want me to do it?
If you have it on your screen, you can change it. I don't know what my computer's doing tonight.
Okay, I'll do it.
And just to, um, add, cuz this, we, we had a conversation in our budget subcommittee meeting today, so, um, I know that there are instances where the warrants might have larger expenses and dollar amounts that can raise questions. And so we did talk about a separate, um, conversation that, you know, Brian and, and Colleen and Wayne were gonna work on where there are, we can get a, maybe a briefing of, of, you know, things over, you know, ten thousand, just so we can get more context of what that is, um, you know, before we just see it on a warrant, because that should be something that we have insight to. Um, obviously, there's a lot of work, you know, most recently, we had the, the plow and the, the pieces with that, that came up, that was, and, you know, there was a lot of effort put into, to that, um, into, you know, and it's really, it's just safety as well. But i- it's helpful that we, you know, we wanna be supportive of those efforts, but we also need to have additional context for those things that might feel larger and, um, in seeking more information, so.
I like that. I, I definitely read, sometimes read the warrants and think, ooh, that's a lot of money for whatever it is.
Yeah, and, and, and really, you know, a lot of it could be, like, you know, in this particular case, it's investment and, you know, putting more towards, um, our grounds and maintenance that we, you know, we need to do and our commitment to, um, our building and infrastructure. So I think that it's important to highlight that, you know, we wanna see what it is, but we also need to highlight, like, this, there is that commitment there to continue to invest in, in doing better for our, our facilities. It's kind of twofold, you know, answering, but also making sure we're acknowledging that there is an ongoing desire when possible to do that.
Yeah, I think it'll be nice to have the documentation to refer back to, too, if someone says, why did you guys buy whatever, or how much did whatever cost, to be able to search the email and see.
Well, Colleen has started to be a mind reader already, and I think she was already putting in, she's like, oh, I think this might get a question, um, which is helpful. I mean, in the past, like, we're in person, you actually get the stack of invoices and it's like, tch, 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 you know, you can go through. It doesn't necessarily give the whole painted story, but you can kind of see where the description might not be as clear. You can go to a direct invoice, but Colleen, I know Colleen and Jane are really responsive and great about, um, getting that follow-up information. And I'm actually so excited that, uh, Rob, um, Bob is able to, um, you know, take that work and he's really kind of putting it back into the buildings wherever possibly he's finding those opportunities. So that's really exciting. Maybe it's like, we're not used to seeing that so much, and so it's like, what is this expense on a plow and, you know, all that, and it's, these new tiles we're gonna be needing, um, for, it's just, it's great. Gotta take care of our stuff.
Okay, so DD.
So DD, um, I think just replaces three fifty one, um.
Oh, Elizabeth has a note.
Oh, yeah, I just, I was looking through, uh, the policy three fifty one and I was just noticing that potentially, uh, these things are what is lost from that policy. Cuz it's, it's, at least it's not specifically stated anymore. I don't know if it matters, but I figured I'd point it out.
I think number three is kind of a given, like, we have to follow federal and state laws.
I, I, yeah. And this, and the measurement is the second thing.
Wait, or DD?
Yep.
Where are you seeing a number three? Oh, it's under the more, sorry, show more, show more. I didn't expand it, okay.
Okay, well, um, I'll make a note, well, um, we can review this, um, next week.
Sounds great.
Thank you. Okay, and then then the next one is DJ, which replaces three oh five.
DJ, wait, DJA?
DJ was the next one on this list, purchasing.
Authority?
Nope.
Purchasing.
Purchasing.
Purchasing is the first one, DJ.
Hold on. Why is it not showing up? Maybe I need to refresh. See, DK, payment, where's D, did it move? Oh, wait, on my screen, it moved, it, sorry, it's like.
It's seven E, DJ.
Yeah, it, yeah, it was just away from the, I know, I saw it, then I was like, I didn't.
Does anybody have, I know Wayne made some, some changes to, does anybody else have any?
Yeah, the only, the only thing that I, I, um, was wondering with the part where it says, only the superintendent and the procurement officer can enter into a contract and or bind the district financially, I think there is some times where the school committee needs to approve a contract as well, so I don't see it necessarily reflected there in, in that maybe school committee approval comes after, or they're, they're the representative of the school. I don't know how we want to word it, but I know we do approve, like, for the, like, the food contract, um.
Mm-hmm.
There are certain things. It doesn't seem to be captured exactly that way here.
Also, I'm wondering why he added it. What is, what was he thinking of? Was he worried about something?
Like, I think maybe the principals can't, you know, go higher, you know, somewhere. That's how I interpret it.
I mean, I imagine, I imagine that's the truth everywhere, and it wasn't already on it from masks. My question is, did something happen and he's worried about something that potentially, he's responding to that way?
Yeah, Colleen, do you have, um, background there?
I think he's thinking of it in terms of thirty B, which is referenced. So it's up to you if you want to keep his sentence, amend his sentence, or delete it and keep the mask original. But I think he's thinking of actual purchases according to thirty B.
I like having it there because thirty B is referenced as a, you know, and it kind of calls out, we've, we've had some questions about our purchasing processes. So I think it's helpful to, to clarify. I just wanna make sure that the, the part, if there's a part of thirty B that also requires school committee um, voting on contracts, since he introduces it there, that that's reflected as well.
So we probably need to look into this next week, given his, um.
Yeah. And I think it's a, a valid, a valid thing to highlight, um, because it, it has come up before. Should I just add that on there right here? Just what about?
I'm, I'm actually, um, replying to his, unless you wanna do it that way. I was just replying to his about saying, adding a line about, um, school committee, um, approval.
Okay. Yeah, 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 that's fine.
We can talk about that next week and I don't know if we need to.
Okay. All right.
Go on to DJA.
Okay. So this also, um, replaces parts of three oh five.
This addition from Wayne, um, I guess my question is, because it's not in the part from mask, is the actual authority legally to the superintendent? And so even if he then has the procurement officer carry out the steps involved, does legally that authority and responsibility need to remain with the superintendent?
That's a good. Who, who you asking? Oh, yeah, as everybody?
Yeah, kind of, maybe Brian.
I, I have my own thoughts. I don't know if it's, like, accurate.
And maybe something that we look at the thirty B again next week, too, but.
We can take a look at thirty B and come up with an answer next week and bring it back one way or the other.
I was thinking, actually, maybe it, it could be in subs, or, um, like, and to their designated, you know, um, represented, you know, procurement representative. Because, I don't know, I don't know, I know that there's certain requirements, though, to be a procurement officer and like, what their, like, certification, I believe, and, and that might play a role in it, um, as well. So that might be captured in thirty B.
I just wanna wanna make sure we don't allow something in our policy that's not truly allowed, um, in some way.
So are we only loo- looking at, about this part of it for DJA or also for, wasn't that also in DD? Didn't he also add that in DD?
Yeah, DJ.
DJ, yeah.
DJ. I think anywhere they, that's introduced, it probably just needs, you know, to be wordsmithed in a way that maybe doesn't expand or go outside of what thirty B entails, or maybe it just, doesn't maybe assume to give authority automatically. Maybe it's just, you know, is, I mean, obviously Bryant has designated Wayne. Um, but that might not be the case necessarily for any procurement person that comes in. I don't know.
Yeah, I don't think the DJ doesn't worry me, because I know that legally the procurement officer could enter into a contract. I think it's more like the authority to make those decisions. Like, I think of like, the, actually enter, entering into the contract, like, the procedure that is carried out versus the overall responsibility for the decision to carry out that procedure.
On the word subsequently, also, I, I mean, I don't know.
You don't like the word subsequently, is that?
Well, cuz, you know, why, why is it there, I, I guess? Why is it not just superintendent and their procurement officer? What is that? Is there, I don't understand why. And, and I imagine you probably took it from thirty, thirty, three oh five or somewhere, or thirty B, I wonder.
Thirty B.
Yep.
Or maybe superintendent and/or the procurement officer.
Yeah, but see, that's where I'm not sure that that's allowed.
Yeah, so that's what I'm wondering, subsequently mean that it's like.
Right.
You know, he's in deference to the superintendent.
That's how I read it.
Right.
Well, just, Mauro and I will read over thirty B before our meeting next week and.
Thank you.
Verify.
Yeah. Good times. Okay. That's all, that's all for the policies for this meeting.
One, can I, one follow-up going back to grants, um, cuz I know that this is a newer exercise that we've started doing this year. And we talked a little bit earlier in the year about for, in the budget subcommittee. Mary, at some point, we're gonna circle back about the MEEF stuff, right? We need to figure out that process.
Yep, as long as it doesn't hold up, um.
Right, right. Yeah, I know that was something that you had raised a question about. Somebody, somebody else, um, so I just wanted to highlight that, cuz I know that there, that is coming out, a lot of them. Um, and, you know, how do we not inhibit, you know, operationally that as well? So, cuz it seemed like that might fall into that bucket.
Okay, um, for chair's report, my, my thing that I wanted to say is, um, obviously, when I ran for school committee and joined the school committee, I had one almost teenager who was pretty self-sufficient, um, and was engaged in her own after-school activities, so I had some flexibility before and after work. Um, when I became a parent to an infant, um, that sort of became a lot more difficult in terms of, you know, short daycare hours and um, trying to meet the needs of an infant and a teenager and stay employed. Um, and I haven't really been able to dedicate the time to being chair that I think that the, um, school and the school committee and everybody deserves. Um, I think that I, I'm not able to do the job well, as well as I would like. And, um, even things like trying to run the meeting with, um, my little buddy squawking and blowing raspberries in the background isn't necessarily what I want to have happen. Um, and so as much as I would like to be able to do more to contribute to the school committee and at some point in the future, I was hoping I would be able to balance everything better. Um, and maybe in the future, I would be able to do it justice again. Um, for right now, I don't think I'm the best person to be the chair. Um, so I would like us to appoint a new chair or a vote for a new chair.
Hillary, can I just say how I think you've done a great job? And I know it's been, like, a lot of things have, you know, the time that you, you know, became chair was, you know, very difficult for us, but I think that you were able to bring us out of that in a way that needed to happen. Um, so I just wanted to extend my appreciation to you for, for that um, and bridging whatever you could with whatever bandwidth that you were able to find. Um, and, and I'm glad that you're still gonna be part of the school committee and, and do the work that we tremendously need you to do. And so I'm sure that all school committee members, you know, are supportive of whatever you need. And, um, I think babies blowing raspberries in the background is actually what we need more at meetings, so I'm not opposed to to that during MCAS presentations, you know, at all. That's gonna be a future student, you never know, so.
It actually bothered me a lot less, it bothered me a lot less happening during MCAS presentation than during our student representative's presentation. Cuz at least adults, I think, have kids or experience with kids and they're less thrown by that, but.
That's the reality of our, our population. I mean, we are parents with a lot of, you know, littles and all, you know, all range. So, um, you exemplify what a lot of parents need. So thank you very much for, um, continuing to stay on and doing the work that needs to be done, whatever way you can.
That's agreed.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Ditto.
Yeah, absolutely.
Ryan, do you hold a vote at this point?
Bye.
Officially step down?
Do you wanna be the chair again for a couple of minutes?
I don't know, cuz if I am, we know what the first motion's gonna be.
Oh, come on now.
To adjourn?
Nine thirteen, it's time to go.
Yeah.
He's like, you've reached a two-hour limit, you can, people are done.
It's time to adjourn, but, all right, so does someone wanna make a motion?
Uh.
Not to adjourn, I know we're not there yet for a chair. Does someone wanna make that motion?
Is it, wait, you have to do a nomination? Is it, wait, do a nomination, right?
Or do a nomination?
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I would like to nominate Natasha for chair.
I'll second.
Discussion? Oh.
I just want to say, I think that Natasha will do a great job in, in terms of making, getting our, getting things set up in a way that they'll have longevity. Because I think there's, there's so much knowledge that you hold that other people don't hold. And that you'll do an amazing job at making sure we don't forget anything. And things are memorialized in such a way that, you know, decades from now, when none of us are on the school committee.
You were giving me way too much credit that I, memorializing things for decades is quite a big feat. And I, I was thinking that I would be able to step in as, in a whatever mediocre way that I could to balance. I know all of us have professional and personal obligations and so. So yeah, whatever, whatever, whatever the committee desires.
Any other discussion?
No.
Roll call vote? Hillary Griffiths?
That didn't come across.
Yes.
Okay. Elizabeth Albana. Albota.
Yes.
Mary Branley.
Yes.
Maro Hogan.
Yes.
Natasha Rivera.
Yes, thank you. And I thank the committee for whatever confidence that you give to me. I know we've gone through some rocky times and I'm only imagining this is a short term. So we will revisit next in July.
That's what you think now.
Although, although my term is up, so who knows, right? What happened after, after this year. But anyway, so thank you. And I hope I do it justice and to you as well, Hillary.
Thank you.
And you get to move us through the rest of the.
Oh, great. That's right. Oh, darn. It is time. Thank you. Okay. Thanks for actually bringing my mind back to that. Okay, subcommittee reports. Oh, the vice chair. You see, I'm already going off. So I will take nominations for vice chair.
I'm making a. Are you going to say the same thing?
Yes.
Or did you want, okay?
I was going to nominate Maro.
I think we just took a vote.
We all nominate, we all second and we all say yes.
So I didn't hear any of that, actually. So do we have two nominations, Maro and Hillary?
No, no, we all nominated Maro.
Everybody nominated Maro? Okay, and so Maro, how are, are you, are you able to?
I'm good with that. Yep, absolutely.
Thank you very much. Thank you, thank you. And I know you bring a lot of also historical information to the table to help where needed as well. So. All right, hearing no other nominations, I think we will put the matter to vote. All in favor for Maro Hogan to serve as vice chair? Mary Branley?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Elizabeth Albota?
Yes.
Maro Hogan?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera? Yes. Motion carries five zero. Congratulations, Maro.
Thank you. Congratulations.
And that's just like 10 minutes ago. It's like the same thing, though. Maro's like, okay. All right, moving on, subcommittee reports and members' comments. I'll, I'll go last. Elizabeth Albota?
Briefly, I'll just say that we had a strategies of committee meeting for Mary and I this week. And we have another one with Brian next week to talk about the district, the district improvement plan and, and his goals to check in. So we have that coming up. I have, I'm, I am the liaison with the human relations committee and they have a meeting on Monday that I'll be going to as well. And Mary, Mary and I were talking actually at our subcommittee meeting. And this is something we could talk about as a group at some point, if not now, about potentially making sure that we get to do the thing we promised to do this year, which was to make sure we're meeting with the teachers, the parents and the community. And it's getting to January now. So we were, we were thinking that potentially we could talk here or soon about how to make sure that we're doing that. I think we talked about having coffees. We talked about making sure that we're at the buildings during times when the teachers could drop in to see us, but not have to come to see us. So that's, that's my, the thing we should talk about.
Can we add that to the next? I think it's important enough that we probably should add it to the next agenda that this, talk about like school committee outreach. And, and how we want to plan, because I know we talked about doing some like the coffees. Maybe we just start carving off like, what are the recommendations that you guys have thought about to do that? Are there certain dates, you know, or is it rotation? But I think maybe that, that's a place that we probably need to add that to the next agenda if possible, Brian.
I'll put it on the rolling agenda right now.
Thank you, Hillary.
Also, if, if we are going out to the agenda, then we, what we need from admin maybe would be some suggestions for times when we could have staff drop in to see us, which would not be annoying to them.
Perfect. Great. Thank you for bringing that up.
What, is that, are you suggesting like doing something like, you know, during the, the middle of the day or something like?
I guess I was thinking that the only format I have is where I work and I know that, so we have, we have to stay contractually until 3:15 on Tuesdays. Every Tuesday. So sometimes it's a principal meeting, sometimes it's a, it's a department meeting and sometimes it's teacher-directed. And so that means I can do whatever I need to do. So I have to be in the building until 3:15, but I can do what I need to do. And that would be a perfect time to have, you know, a school committee member come into one of our bigger rooms and, and then I could go and tell them what I need to tell them during that time, but I wouldn't have to. So if there are times like after the school day, when teachers are in the building, but they don't have something, someplace they definitely have to be, then maybe that we can be in the building then and they can drop in if they would like to.
Okay. We do a similar type of thing. I was telling Elizabeth with the education foundation that we just have, you know, the, the administrators put out dates and, and again, it's, it's when they're going to be there anyway. Of, you know, drop in and see us with ideas and things like that. So it's, it's informal, but it gives them an opportunity. We could also do something a little bit more structured. I remember Lydia Clancy and I had, had done something at the high school that we actually, you know, invited teachers, staff members into an after-school meeting. And we had a lot of great, we had a great turnout and we had a lot of, a lot of good feedback. So there's a couple of different ways that we can do it.
I mean, you can do more than one way. We can do, we'd start with the drop-in and then we can figure out what people want to know more about and then we can do things like that too.
Right. We, we did talk about going to them though versus like not just having it at the high school and having everybody from the other two schools come. It's better if we just, you know, make the extra effort and go to them to their different schools. So it means a little bit more work for us, but hopefully if we can rotate between the five of us, won't be too, you know.
I mean, I wonder if, you know, even gauging the appetite directly from, I'm like, hey, the school committee would like to do this. What do you think the best, you know, means or whatever would be that you'd be, you know, wanting to, you know, attend or however that might be. I mean, because I think we're assuming, you know, what might be the best way sometimes, but I wonder if it's something we, you know, for the drop-in times, like at certain times, that might work better.
Just when, when the teachers have to be in the building, but they can do what they'd like to do and being able to do them at that time is probably going to work. So if we know those times we go in once and then say they don't like it, then we don't have to do that again, right? But I think that if we start there, then I think that's a good place to start. And that's not, it's not just, and we've been talking about the staff a lot here, but I also want to say that we are also, I want to make sure that we're focusing on the community too. We talked about maybe waiting for the bagel place to open and then waiting for, you know, like the, the hullabaloo to kind of die down and maybe we'd be there or we're available there at some point, or we rotate out of there or the bean, as we talked about in the past. So being downtown available for the community and to parents, and there might be another way to do parents also that.
At the library before Mr. Mark's storytime is kind of nice because parents are on their way out and like the kids can do their scavenger hunt and different things like that or.
Yeah, that's a good.
Well, I just refer to like Charles, the great example, like you have to go into the community to where, where people are, you know, congregating to meet them there. And I that's a very good point. All right. So next agenda, we'll. We will speak more about that.
And maybe in the meantime, Brian, you could just ask the three principals their ideas on what might work best.
Yep, I'll reach out to them.
Would be great.
Lily, okay. Elizabeth, anything else?
Nope, that's it.
Okay, Mary Branley?
Um, so we, besides a strategic planning meeting, I was at the community preservation committee. Community preservation committee, yeah. I guess that's a meeting last night, but we already talked about that with Keenan Field and the key, yeah, and then the bleachers and that. So I try to be there when there's something of conversation, just to listen. But of course they usually call on you. So, and then.
Thanks, thanks for going.
Natasha, you can talk about the budget.
I'll, I'll wait until after because that'll, everyone won't want to hang up after, as that starts talking, those are very sad, sad numbers. Anything else, Mary, for wellness?
Oh, I did want to, I, I wanted to give kudos to the, to the different forums that are going on. The middle school information session for, for the, on the 12th of January. And also the Fowler Spanish immersion information night, Fowler, and also the district virtual forum that's taking place at the high school pathways and opportunities. I just love to keep seeing that, you know, that avenue of getting information out. So just wanted to say kudos to the different schools. Ditto. Oh, can I piggyback of that, the Spanish immersion one? Brian, is there a way that you can pass on to both, to the high school? Because I see that York is not here anymore. There, I guess they, certain classes were possibly asked to, for kids to go to that and to be part of, you know, speaking about the, the program. But there's not, there hasn't been a whole lot of information sent out to parents of Spanish immersion, like the upper schools about that to kind of maybe push their, their student to, to be involved with that. There was a, a bit of questioning about that over this past week. So I don't know how many volunteers they've gotten so far, but if we could kind of see like what else they can do if they don't have enough. Maybe they have enough. I have, I don't know. I personally have not heard anything about it as a parent. So other than reading, you know, I didn't know that the students were also included. So, and it's also possible that my students are not sharing. So. So yeah, if we could, if you could just double check on that.
I'll double check.
Oh, I guess I can go.
Yeah, oh yeah, sorry. I'm, I'm waiting for somebody else. I forgot.
No, I, I don't.
Maro.
If it marries, all done. Let's see, we have policy next week and personnel next week. And then we also have the FinCom meeting on Monday. I think that's pretty much it for those that I'm on anyway.
Maro, can I ask you a question about? So in the SAC meeting the other day, there was a lot of conversation about the exchange program, the students and how to better support hosting families or just about cultural differences and whatnot. And I know at some point separately, you, you have, you're engaged very heavily with that. I wonder if maybe you might be able to reach out to principal York or Brian, if that's okay, because I know it, it seemed to be a piece that the students were really invested in, in feedback that how, how the students who come here are received and cultural preparing host families. I'm sure I'm oversimplifying the concerns, but they talked about it pretty extensively at the meeting recently. And I just thought maybe if there's a way that you could connect or bridge, you know, or even at some point when you're, when you're turned to, you know, if you want to attend one of the meetings, then you're, you may even be able to speak, you know, to what you know and what you're, hear the feedback directly yourself.
Right. No, that's great. Yeah, I can definitely reach out to her. I mean, I had already talked to her previously about this, this past semester about hosting families or how we can kind of, because we were kind of in dire need of some. So I did talk to her a bit about that.
Yeah, it was, a lot of it was about, you know, different understanding of like what the expectations of a student who comes from a different country, who may have certain cultural norms that, about going out. You know, just all those things and, and just supporting, you know, the meaner family of expecting that. And also, you know, when we send students elsewhere, you know, what they might experience. And so whatever, whatever you're able to lend, I think it, it just seemed really relevant in the conversation that they, they spoke a lot about. So. Thank you. Anything else, Maro?
Nope, that's it.
Okay.
Can I add on to something Mary was saying about the forums and such? Is there a way for some of them to share them with people who don't have children enrolled? Because I think, for example, the event that they had at the high school for the middle schoolers to look at the high school. I knew about because of being on the school committee. And so I went with my child who goes to a different school and she really liked the high school. If I weren't on the school committee, I wouldn't have known about that event. And I think similarly for parents of, say, three and four-year-olds who are considering private school, if they were to find out about the Spanish immersion presentation and go to that, they might really like it. So some of those things, I think we have an opportunity to make people more interested in the schools or drive them back. But I don't know that we, and I think we're doing such a much, a much better job at outreach to families already involved with the school. But I don't know if there's a way we can like share to the town Facebook pages or, and some other like ask. I don't know. If there's, if there's a way to share.
Well, it's part of our, it sounds like our marketing strategy, right, is how, how we can market some of these unique pieces a little bit better.
Are those flyers, you know, going out on like Facebook? Do we know for the forums?
So we can make sure that they go out on social media. Usually they do go out on, at least, I don't remember if it's Facebook or Twitter. Colleen sends them out usually on our social media network.
We don't share with other groups, though. It's up to someone to share it. We don't have access to those.
Right, so.
I sometimes do that. So yeah, just to get them out there, like the parent group and.
Yeah, I'm happy to do that too, as long as I know that it's out there.
Yeah.
So we can talk about that and see, I can also reach out to Holly and see about having her help us spread that.
Holly, Holly's still around? I thought, is she still doing Maynard stuff? Is this, you're talking about for?
Beacon? Yeah, it's local. Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh, I haven't heard a lot of, I'm excited because I feel like there's been such a gap in, in our ability to do advertising. So I'd be great to get any type of.
Find out, let you know.
I think that's a really good idea though, Hillary.
Yeah.
Contact now for the Maynard Family Network, I think it is, for the young kids. So, and she, because we were talking about the Green Meadow, you know, getting the word out and that, so we can definitely utilize that resource. So that's a great suggestion.
Yeah. When I did the library task force this year, we talked a lot about sharing resources and like the schools, including library activities in the smores for the applicable age groups and vice versa. And I think that's something as a town we need to do better at. But I was really impressed when we laughed at high school forum. My kid was like, I gotta go to Maynard because they have this and this and this and this and this. And she's been talking about it nonstop. And that's, you know, that's a way to get what we want. But I wouldn't have known about it.
I will say that I knew, I know someone who was, who went to it, who has their kind of privates. So somehow they did find out there was some way.
Yeah, I think probably if you look for it, you could find it.
Yeah, so I think, but I think we could always do better marketing. That is definitely something.
And not, not exactly related, but it did come up recently. Brian and I met with a, a parent a couple of weeks ago who expressed, I know we've really tried to work on this, but they're at a district placement and we, including them on district emails that, and I know Char, Charles is probably going to like hit his head against the wall hearing about this because I know you apart worked with CPAC extensively on that. But I think it might be a matter of, we just need to update the list for each school possibly. Because I know there was an email designated for that, that they have to get updated. So that might be just, again, maybe not impact these, but just like the smores.
That should be simple, because we had a whole system in, in place. I think we've probably had a number of changes in principles since that time, so we.
Right, right, just circle back to, to flush that out, um, with updated information. That would be great, because they indicated not getting, um, smores for a couple of years.
Okay, we can take care of that.
Thank you. Uh, Hillary?
Yes.
Did I go to you already? No.
Um, I'm good.
Okay, I can't remember. Oh, that's right, well, you kind of did the chair report, so I guess that's. Um, okay, and I guess for, did I do everybody else? Oh, except for myself. So budget-wise, um, the select board, or the town administrator Greg shared at the select board meeting, and it was in the town administrator's, um, newsletter, a tentative, um, increase that the school department would get for 3% for the FY23 budget, which is, you know, insufficient for what we need. And I know, uh, Brian, uh, today, you said you were speaking with Greg about, you know, what the impact of, of that means. So this is very introductory, but I know from the, the landscape, it doesn't look very, you know, great. Uh, the, the areas that were highlighted were health, um, insurance, that's 8% right now, that's factored into that number. Then, um, that could go down, but as of now, um, Maya is not willing to project a lower increase than 8%. The governor hasn't released his budget yet, so that would also. Would, oh, her, that's right, because we have a new governor, that's right. Uh, the governor has not released her budget yet, so, uh, that may impact. Well, and it could be a little different, too, because under prior governor, um, his gov, his budget was always more conservative, and that's the one that seemed to be budgeted around. I don't know if Governor Healy is going to, you know, have that same conservative lens in releasing her budget, because, you know, her political positions are also different. So, so that is something, um, to, to be worked on, and there was some updates that were given regarding the Green Meadow Building Committee, and we talked about that already. Personnel, we have that next week to talk about. We have, oh, uh, from a CPAC update, so we had, uh, a CPAC member, Nancy McNeil resigned from, from CPAC. She was very briefly on it, but she, um, had a, an illness and precluded her from continuing on. And, uh, we do have a new member in, in the works that will be, um, hopefully joining, and we will be, actually, we've added a meeting January 18th. Kim Bell, Bell de Soro, who, um, is, you know, has a lot of children in the district, different grades, and brings a great expertise in, um, her field. So we hope to have more updates for that, and the recommendations from CPAC are still in the works. So it just will be when, uh, make, the timing of that will change, and so I can update once everyone is well and regrouped, when the school committee will be able to get those recommendations, uh, finalized. But they will be getting them probably in the next two months, um, with the holidays and too, so it's a little, little kooky there. And I think that might have been all my updates that I have. Um, let's see, just checking what I had from the select board. Oh. So there were a lot of, and just only to highlight from a budgetary perspective, there were a lot of change orders that were needed for, for DPW regarding water projects. One of the water projects has increased, I think the starting project was, and there's like well for A and Treatment Center, but one of them started at 91,000, it's now to like 1.5 million. So it's just a lot of, uh, and it didn't sound like the select board was, you know, entirely excited about that increase that seemed to be, uh, large, but we obviously need to have water running, and so it's kind of like, what do you do? You know, with that, you can't stop a project, but anyway, so those are some of the budgetary conversations. They did approve an interim contract or a contract for two years for the fire department for a 3% increase effective, I think it was now or January. So there are some conversations there, and Greg had budgeted, I think, about $50,000 for other contractual needs that he'll need to plan for, for the town. That's all I got, I think. Oh, and the charter review committee is meeting next week as well. So I may have some updates on timeline, but basically the steps are the, the select board has to schedule public hearings, it's gonna have to go to, all the articles have to be approved, because it's broken out into several articles, they have to be approved at town meeting, and then there's a two different vote. So it's really not gonna be like another year-ish before we get a final charter. So, that's all I got.
Can I ask a question about that, then?
Yeah.
Um, because there are a number of, um, especially in the, the policy D section, there's a bunch of stuff that. Charter.
Okay.
And we had decided that we were just gonna put it, those to the side, um, until the charter, our charter was finalized. So I'm just trying to figure out, do we maybe try and go, just go ahead with, with those?
If we're. So, I mean, depending on what, yeah, it depends on maybe what the update, it might be small enough where it might not impact. I don't know what, you know, precisely which ones you're, you're, you're thinking about, or the context of them. I know the ones that will be changing aren't necessarily D, they're the ones are, or maybe just, these are financial policies. The resignation policy, that one, um, certainly, because the, the, the charter will be, actually, I think the po, the charter will align more with what our policy is, um, that, which is more aligned with MGL. So that is one, I know that had a question mark was put on, like what to do with the resignation one, but there is clarifying language about notice of resignation and stuff that will be updated to the charter, or hopefully with pending votes and all that stuff. So, um, maybe let me know, once you go through them, which ones in particular that you, um, are in draft form that you're not sure, and I can see if they're gonna be impacted of, based on our discuss, if we're recommending changes to something that might impact them, it might not be, might not be a change.
Okay, all right, thank you.
No problem. Okay, anything else? All right, so hearing none, I think at this point, we will be doing the, uh, consent, consent agenda, approval of minutes, and let me pull up the minutes that we have. Oh, dear.
September 29th and.
September, I know, remember the September one, um.
October 6th.
October 6th, so there were a couple of comments on, was it grammatical? Hold on, I can't, my computer froze. Oh, dear. Give me one moment while I open up the browser. Okay, um, for September 29th? I'm sorry, um, yeah, September 29th?
Do they, are they the same for everybody else?
Are the, the ones that are in the folder?
The top at least, maybe it's just the top. It's, it, both of them say a Thursday, September 29th.
Oh, okay.
Grab the header.
Okay. Okay.
Got it.
Okay.
So Mauro, I know you had some edits there, just for caps, it was more grammatical.
Yeah.
Not substantive. Anybody else had anything? On the 29th, okay, and then the other one for, uh, I mean, a lot of documents in this packet tonight, um, October 6th. Anybody, anything else substantive? I didn't see anything of substance, just more grammatical as well. Okay, so without objection, um, I will approve minutes from October 6th, 2022, and September 29th, 2022 with edits. All right, approved. Warrants. And Colleen, those were, um, I know you sent the email today about it, but I don't think I.
The 32.
32 and, 32, 33 and 34, got it. Any questions about warrants 22, 23, and, I'm sorry, 32, 33 and 34? Okay, and I, I mean, just to, for, we talked a little bit about the, the tracker one, that was part of one of those warrants, so. All right, so without objection, um, I move that we accept the approved warrants, uh, 23 dash oh three two, 23 dash oh three three, and 23 dash oh three four. Okay, all approved and accepted. Um, and now we are moving into executive session. Just confirming real quick, Brian, you're signing off, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, I know, because there was something, I think, with the secretarial stuff, but I think, do we?
You have, it's just the MOA.
Okay, so are we, um, and we are not reconvening, though, so, right, there's no vote that we need to do? Okay, God, I just wanna make sure that, I understood that, okay. All right, Brian, thank you very much, and everybody, um, executive session, we move to enter into executive session under MGL, Chapter 30A, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining with the secretarial union, AFSCME, Local 1703, State Council Number 93, and, um, under Section 21A2, to conduct strategy session in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel for the superintendent. Since an open meeting will have a detrimental effect on the bargaining of the public body, the chair so declares, yes, it declare, the school committee will not reconvene in an open session. Okay, enter in via roll call, Mauro Hogan?
Yes.
Mary Branley?
Yes.
Hillary Griffiths?
Yes.
Elizabeth Elbota?
Yes.
Natasha Rivera, yes. All right, Maggie, have a good evening.